Hi Tina, it's Melissa DeGenova.
Are you calling number four?
I'm not sure because I'm only on my phone for reasons of parenting responsibilities this evening, but I can give you my number. It's 3604-366-
We got it. We got you. And we'll rename it.
Thank you. Thanks so much. And I should be in front of my WebEx just a little bit.
Okay.
I have a window of childcare for the evening.
Okay, thank you.
Hi Tina, it's Counselor Kirby Young. I'm also on the phone for about the first next fifteen, twenty minutes. So I'm the 679 number.
Okay, so you're the other call-in user. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Hi Tina, Counselor Pete Frye, back at my desk and ready for action.
I see you and we can hear you.
Uh, Tina?
Cheers, thanks.
Tina, this is Sadhu. I don't believe that Sarah is that other call-in number. She's got her own login below. I don't believe you've identified the call-in user with the eight.
Thank you, Sadhu. You're sounding very faint as well. I'll do a sound check in a moment, though. Could we have call-in user number eight identify themselves, please?
Is there anyone else that has called in?
I'm just, Tina, I'm just verifying that my remote-
Hello Clerk, this is planning staff in the Broadway Room. Can you hear us?
Can you repeat that, please? Can you repeat that?
I think it was planning staff, did I hear as being a call-in?
Yeah, that's the, that's the, that's the one caller user four.
Okay, we will reassign that. Thank you. And Sadhu, your sound is a little bit faint. I don't know if you can get close-
Is it any better now?
Try again.
Any better now?
Yes, that's better.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay Tina?
Yes, Counselor Carr.
Absolutely. Okay, my screen is up. I'm not logged into the mayor's screen, so I'll just go through- and I've got the script. I'll go through the script.
I'm here now.
Oh, you're here. Okay.
Yes. Thanks for holding the, uh, it all down. Sorry, I just had a police board meeting that ran a little longer than I expected it, so, um-
No problem. Over to you.
You're out. Okay, thanks for being willing. Okay, so how are we doing, Clerks?
So Mayor Stewart, we are all set up in the chamber. Anytime you wish to start.
Okay, I'll just say I'm trying to find my desktop, but it doesn't seem to be letting me onto the voting machine. So I'll just start things with the script and start rolling through. And if someone there wants to access my computer remotely, I think I'm all ready to go. Let me just double-check here. Oh, sorry, I know what's wrong. Okay. Just bear with me, Counsel. It'll be just two minutes. Counsel, while I'm waiting for things to load, I think I can start and just get through the perfunctory stuff at the beginning. I don't know who that is. Apologies. Okay, um, so Clerks, I'm going to start now. I will call this public hearing on Thursday, September seventeenth to order. Counsel, for the purposes of confirming you have quorum, please ensure your video is turned on, and that's especially important in public hearings, which are quasi-judicial. We're convening this meeting by electronic means, and that's under the stare order M192 from the province of B.C. Please note if my connection is lost during any portion of this meeting, we will recess the meeting until the connection is restored. If the Counsel loses connection during any portion of the hearing, we'll also need to recess, and we have circulated the information to get you back online. To ensure this quorum is maintained through the meeting, please let the Clerk know if you're going to leave. And the live stream of this meeting will continue with audio only as Counsel are participating in the meeting by phone. Presentations, amendments, and vote results will be projected to viewers when available. Lastly, we have speakers who will be providing comments to Counsel by phone, and a moderator will assist in patching the speakers through when their turn comes up. Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Stewart in the chair. Counselor Carr?
Here.
Counselor DeGenova?
Present.
Counselor Frye?
Here.
Counselor Swanson?
Here.
Counselor Hardwick?
Present.
Counselor Weeb?
Present.
Counselor Boyle?
Present.
Counselor Dominado? Counselor Dominado? Counselor Bly?
Present.
Counselor Kirby Young?
Present.
The meeting has quorum. Mayor Stewart?
Point of privilege?
Sorry, Counselor DeGenova, I'm just going to move through the first segments of this, and I'll move directly to your point of privilege before we start any proceedings. First, I'd like to acknowledge we're on the traditional, oh, I'm just sorry, I'm hearing lots of background noise, so folks could just make sure they're muted. Just double-check that you're muted. Thanks. First, acknowledge that we're in the traditional unceded territories of the Musquegon Squamish and Slaveltooth people, and we thank them for their generosity to all of us who reside on their lands. And of course, we want to thank the staff, who are doing a tremendous job here at the city, especially during COVID. Thanks for that. I'm going to walk through the announcements. Speakers have five minutes to make their comments, and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or oppose the recommendations. Speakers may only speak once, and should follow along on Twitter @VanCityClerk for updates, so they don't miss their turn to speak. And you can always send comments in writing to publichearing@vancouver.ca, email to publichearing@vancouver.ca. Speakers with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight delay, so to navigate through your slides, please say the word "next," and I'll coach you through that. Finally, if Counsel does not conclude from hearing from all speakers this evening, we will recess and reconvene on Wednesday, September thirtieth, at 3:00 p.m. by electronic means. Our reminder that Counsel's role at public hearing is to be a quasi-judicial body, which means that Counsel is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. Counsel members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant or technical advice from staff, but should save debate for after the close of speakers. After hearing from speakers, Counsel may: 1. Approve, in principle, the application; 2. Refuse the application; or 3. Differ the application for further consideration. So before we, I have the Clerk read the summary of correspondence and application. Counselor DeGenova, I'll turn it to you.
Thanks, Mayor Stewart. And I'm sorry, it's not related to the public hearing directly, but I just wanted to virtually rise on a point of privilege to wish Counsel Hardwick a very happy birthday.
Oh, that's so nice of you.
So, my apologies for taking up any time, but I just wanted to do so, and, uh, and, uh, thank you very much for allowing me.
No problem. Happy birthday, Counsel Hardwick. I think we all, we all wish you a great day, and what a fine way to celebrate it. By going through a four-hour public hearing. I know you love it, though. I know you love public hearings, so-
Oh, yeah. It'd be great if we got done before, Ken. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So Clerks, can you read the summary of correspondence and the application?
This is an application by GBL Architects to rezone 601 Beach Crescent from the existing CD1 366 Comprehensive Development District to a new CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a fifty-five-story residential mixed-use building containing three hundred and three market strata titled units and a hundred and fifty-two social housing units. A height of one hundred and sixty-three meters and a maximum total floor area of forty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-five square meters are proposed. The general manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval subject to the conditions as set out in the summary and recommendations of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers' list and receipt of public comments. Thirty-seven pieces of correspondence in support, fifty-six pieces of correspondence in opposition, along with two petitions with a total of two hundred and forty-seven names, as well as four pieces of correspondence regarding other aspects related to the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 4:45 p.m. today.
Thank you so much. If there are any speakers for this item in which to speak to Counsel, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 35766 hashtag, and you'll hear that number a lot tonight, but it's also available on the live stream feed and on Twitter. We do have Leifke Visers from a rezoning center with a presentation. We do have lots of speakers to counsel, so we should just move right to the presentation, and I'll turn it over to Leifke Visers.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. We can hear you.
Fantastic. Can you see my screen?
I'm just checking on the public. Let's try to check the public site to make sure that's happening. I don't see it on the WebEx yet.
It is on the public site.
Great, yeah, public site, and now on, I guess it's coming on WebEx, although I'm looking at myself at the moment. There we go. It's coming up now on the WebEx, but it is on the public site.
Fantastic. Thank you for your patience. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. My name is Leifke Visers, rezoning planner. This report evaluates an application to rezone the site at 601 Beach Crescent from the existing CD1 366 to a new CD1 district. The subject site is 1.4 acres in area. The site is located to the south of the Grandville Bridge Seymour off-ramp. It runs Pacific Street to the north, Beach Crescent to the south, and Grandville Bridge. The site is surrounded by three residential towers to the east, inching from twenty-five to thirty-eight stories, and Vancouver House to the west at forty-nine stories. To the northeast of the site is the Grandville Loop's future development site. In this image, Vancouver House is still under construction. In the next few slides, I'll discuss the policy context under which this application is being considered. The existing CD1 366's file law, together with the Falls Creek North official development plan, establishes the floor area, building height, and housing unit limits for the site and the surrounding area. The higher buildings policy further enables greater height at the site, provisional and architectural excellence, and enhanced sustainability. The Falls Creek North Official Development Plan, which extends along the waterfront from Grandville Bridge to Quebec Street, provides planning for the massive redevelopment of this area, most of which has already been built out. On this slide, the projected heights of each building are contemplated, with seventeen stories anticipated at 601 Beach Crescent. Of note, a number of neighboring buildings, which have already been built out, exceed the height limits envisioned. Any changes to CD1 zoning in the Falls Creek North ODP area must be accompanied with consequential amendments to the Falls Creek North ODP to ensure compliance. The fourteen sites in the existing CD1, which have already been developed, contain market strata housing, two waterfront parks, and one childcare center. Non-market or social housing is called for on the remaining four undeveloped sites identified here in orange and yellow. In 2011, the higher buildings policy was amended to include the subject site, together with Vancouver House at 1480 Howe Street, pictured here as seen from the north. The idea was that taller buildings at these two sites adjacent to the bridge would form a gateway entry to downtown from the Grandville Bridge. The Vancouver House was the first of the gateway sites to proceed to CD1 rezoning in 2014. It was approved for a height of one fifty-one meters and a maximum floor area of fifty-five thousand eight hundred sixty-five square meters. The higher buildings policy requires an enhanced review of buildings greater than five hundred fifty feet or the two Grandville Bridge gateway sites. These graphics illustrate architectural renderings of the Grandville Gateway as viewed from the north on the left and as viewed from the south on the right. As the project falls under the higher buildings policy, which requires applicants demonstrate leadership in sustainability and carbon-neutral settings, staff have worked with the applicant to create project visit targets. These targets significantly enhance the path of design and reduce the carbon emissions by a further fifty percent beyond the green building policy for rezonings. This building will be nearly zero emissions and will be an industry leader in zero emission solutions for high-rise residential buildings in Vancouver. Key objectives of the higher building policy are to establish a significant, recognizable venture arc for architectural creativity and excellence while making a significant contribution to the city's skyline. Higher buildings are also expected to demonstrate leadership and advances in sustainable design and energy consumption. The policy also identifies key objectives such as minimizing adverse shadowing and view impact on the public realm. This slide illustrates the seventeen-story housing form that was envisioned under the original CD1 366 above. As compared to the tower form proposed in this application and enables for the higher building policy. This slide illustrates broader urban design objectives embodied in the higher buildings policy for achieving a legible dome-shaped skyline. The top graphic illustrates the application for 601 Beach Crescent superimposed on the dome skyline. The second photo, the skyline is viewed from Jericho Beach with 601 Beach Crescent superimposed for reference. Below is a projected view from Charleston Park. The city of Vancouver is the former owner of 601 Beach Crescent, and under both the CD1 and Falls Creek North ODP, the site was intended to be developed with a seventeen-story tower and a four-to-six-story podium consisting of one hundred and fifty-two social housing units and one hundred and thirty-eight market housing units. In 2016, the city issued an invitation to offer for the sale of 601 Beach Crescent, which stipulated that the purchaser must include in their proposed development the one hundred and fifty-two social housing units specified for the site, with market housing making up the remainder of the development. The invitation-
Just going to stop you there for a second. The public screen is fine, but the WebEx screen is actually quite small, and I'm just wondering if you can enlarge that for Counselors.
Oh, certainly.
Yeah.
How's that? Is that all right?
It's better, yep, thank you.
The city of Vancouver is the former owner of 601 Beach Crescent, and under both the CD1 and the Falls Creek North ODP, the site was intended to be developed with a seventeen-story tower and a four-to-six-story podium consisting of one hundred and fifty-two social housing units and one hundred and thirty-eight market housing units. In 2016, the city issued an invitation to offer for the sale of 601 Beach Crescent, which stipulated that purchaser must include in their proposed development the one hundred and fifty-two social housing units specified for the site, with market housing making up the remainder of the development. The ITO did not set limits on market housing component that could be achieved, and instead indicated that it would be subject to the applicable policies, including the higher buildings policy, and ultimately, a decision by Counsel on rezoning of the site. The application proposes a fifty-five-story mixed-use residential building with a combination of social and market residential units and commercial uses at grade, with proposed FSR of seven to- The proposal includes ground-floor commercial with outdoor amenity space above, as shown on the top right. A ground-floor plan with residential entrance off Beach Crescent is shown on the bottom left and landscape sheet features below. An enhanced design review of 461 Beach Crescent included, at the cost of the developer, the temporary appointment of two additional local design experts and two international design experts to the Urban Design Panel to review the architectural excellence and sustainable leadership of the application. A full-day urban design panel was dedicated to this project, including site visits, sustainability workshops, and a dedicated urban design panel meeting, which was attended by a large number of the public and the four additional design experts. The applicant hosted a pre-application open house prior to submitting their formal application in September of 2018. A city-hosted open house was then held, which drew a hundred and twenty-one attendees. A total of forty-three comment sheets were received, along with feedback from another hundred and eighteen individuals, by email and by phone. Feedback received during consultation and from the Urban Design Panel formed a complete resubmission of the application in October of 2019, which addressed the key feedback received from the public and from the enhanced UDP process. In order to generate feedback on this resubmission, neighboring residents were notified with postcards and via email. The city received thirty-nine responses from the resubmission. Supportive feedback focused on the new tower placement, whereas concerns were related to building height, architecture, and traffic. In response to these concerns, staff have since worked with the applicant to prepare urban design conditions included in this report that will improve the architectural excellence of the building. Further, staff have worked with the engineering team to improve the driveway access to the building. In the resubmission, the building podium was redesigned, and the tower was pushed a hundred feet north of Beach Crescent. These two major shifts, in addition to limiting the height of the tower, address the key concerns raised by UDP and the public, and will be discussed in the coming slides. It should be noted that throughout the rezoning process, residents raised concerns about height. Staff have assessed the additional height proposed and determined that some adjustments should be made to diminish the height to five hundred thirty-five feet, to the help of parapet. Above, the red outline indicates proposed height, whereas the tower graphic represents the height supported in this report and conditioned. Furthermore, staff are recommending, in this report, for approval for the design development of the tower crown, including by canting the top substantially towards the east. These modifications are meant to achieve several urban design goals, including modest reduction of shadows, improving contextual fit, and affording stronger emphasis on the Grandville marker, including more prominent skyline profile. Urban design objectives for the residential livability between residential buildings utilizes the horizontal minimum separation of eighty feet between residential buildings above seventy feet of height to maintain privacy, livability, including allowing access to daylight and air. The tower portion of this building is set at least eighty feet back from the neighboring towers. In 2018, the application for 601 Beach Crescent proposed a tower coming down to grade along Beach Crescent, with no setback, as shown on the left. In response to feedback from the community, UDP and staff, the tower was moved to the north, just to the view in the image to the right. This massive shift ameliorated a number of concerns raised by residents and UDP, including solar access to May and Lauren Brown Park, the interface at grade along Beach Crescent, solar access to outdoor amenity space, private view impacts to neighboring buildings, and solar access to Seymour Muse. The podium setbacks were also introduced at six and eight stories of the podium along Beach Crescent. The higher buildings policy had anticipated shadowing of May and Lauren Brown Park, shown here in green. The impact of the 2018 submission's shadow is on the left. The north portion of the park is in shadow at 11:00 a.m. on the equinox. However, in the 2019 resubmission, the tower component has shifted back to be one hundred feet north of Beach Crescent, as shown on the right. This substantial move results in much of the tower's shadow aligning with existing shadow of Vancouver House, which is already shadowed in gray, thereby eliminating or reducing late morning shadow impact to the park. The 2018 submission, as shown on the left, proposed a six-story podium along Seymour Muse without step backs. Neighboring residents and UDP were concerned with the impact this may have on Seymour Muse and the neighboring building, including outdoor space adjacent to the muse. The 2019 resubmission, as shown on the right, includes townhouse forms along the muse, setbacks on the property line, with the podium setback an additional three and a half meters above the townhouses. This form complements the existing townhouse forms across Seymour Muse, and further setbacks reduce solar impact to the muse and to the neighboring building's outdoor space. In the 2018 submission, the podium courtyard would be in shadow most of the time, shown in the image on the left. This outdoor space would be largely shadowed by the podium portion to the south. In the 2019 resubmission, the terrace thing was introduced to the podium, and its southern portion was reconfigured, providing more amenity spaces on the south podium roof decks. Both changes improved solar access to the podium housing and its amenity spaces. This shift also pulled the podium housing back from the bridge deck in line with suggestions made by UDP to improve the livability of the units. I'll now speak to the housing, starting with market housing units. The application proposes to increase the market units from one hundred and thirty-eight allowable under existing zoning to three hundred and three, a gain of one hundred and sixty-five units. The applicant also proposes to provide all one hundred and twenty-two units of social housing in accordance with the ODP requirements and the invitation to offer. However, due to the previously mentioned proposal to increase the number of market housing units, this results in a slight drop in the percentage of social housing units, but not in the absolute number of social housing units. This translates to a nineteen-unit social housing shortfall if the eleven-point-zero-five percentage figure under the ODP were to be maintained. These nineteen units, it should be noted, are above and beyond what is called for in the ODP. To address this shortfall, a twelve-point-one million dollar cash amenity contribution is offered, which staff note is the cost anticipated to provide nineteen units in the vicinity. Pages sixteen and seventeen of the referral report list twenty-one units. However, under the ODP, it is nineteen, which is the correct number. Upon completion, the one hundred and fifty-two social housing units of turnkey social housing will be transferred to the city as an aerospace parcel. Determining the affordability levels of these units is not part of the developer's obligation for this site and does not form part of the decision before Counsel tonight. The ultimate affordability level of these units will be determined by staff and brought forward to Counsel for approval in a future report. While a minimum of thirty percent of the social housing units must rent to households with incomes below Hill's rates, staff will look to deepen the overall affordability while ensuring the building is still self-sustaining. With respect to public benefits, this project will contribute approximately seven hundred thousand dollars to public art. As noted, a cash community amenity contribution of twelve-point-one million dollars is provided for social housing in the vicinity. An in-kind social housing is valued at sixty-six million dollars, and the total value of public benefits is almost eighty million dollars. The Falls Creek North ODP area is exempt from VCL payment. As part of the restart smart Vancouver initiative, in response to COVID-19, this project will contribute to approximately sixteen hundred new onsite and offsite construction jobs during the initiative's recovery phase. If Counsel moves to the motion, we also ask that you move the yellow memo, which provides an additional engineering condition, which accounts for latecomer agreements. Thank you. Staff are available to answer any questions.
Thanks so much for your presentation. And I'm just going to ask now, I believe the applicant team also has a presentation, so I'll just ask the Clerk to load that up, and Counsel, just so you know, it's about twenty-two slides.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Stu Plann and Daniel Eisenberg with the GBL Architects here. We are, GBL are joint venture with JYOM Architecture on the design and drawing support of the project. And Candace Lai of JYOM Architecture will be giving the presentation on the project tonight. I just wanted to indicate that we have a couple of other participants here at the meeting who will be available. Those include Pinnacle International, developer for the project, Bunce Engineering, any questions regarding traffic or vehicle movements around the project, and BT Building Science, who are the sustainability consultants on this project. And so I'd like to end it up to Candace Lai to give a presentation on the design.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Stu. Hi, good evening. My name is Candace, and I will be presenting the design for the 601 Beach Crescent project. Slide, please. Slide, please. The site bordered by Beach Crescent, Rolston Street, Pacific Street, and Seymour Muse is immediately adjacent and traversed by the Granville Street Bridge off-ramp, resulting in a triangular shape with a seven-meter difference from one end to the other. From the start, we knew the design will be fully contextual and responsive to the unique site. The movement-inspired design created by the undulating curves of the facade that flow dynamically from top to bottom allude to a dancing pair performing for the community and the city. Through massing form and motion, we harmonize the ideals of creating a vibrant public realm celebrating the new beach neighborhood. Slide, please. The design has been refined throughout the process. We collaborated with the planners, listened to the participants during the two open houses, and were advised by a very respected urban design panel. The city, the public, and UDP provided invaluable comments that shaped the design to where we are today. Slide, please. The site plan shows the refinements to the locations the tower now set 100 feet back from Beach Crescent, and that it significantly reduces the chattering of Maylorn and Brown Park, alleviates view impacts to adjacent buildings, and allows for more south-facing amenity areas on the podium and roof levels. Specific analysis and diagrams will be presented later on. The landscape design takes on the dynamic elements of the architecture. The design focuses on pedestrian experience and place-making on the ground plane, allowing permeable connections throughout. Outdoor amenity spaces are also celebrated in multi-level landscape terraces in the podium. Slide. The design forms are sculpted and poised simultaneously complementing as a pair, and yet contrasting with its own unique character, fulfilling the envisioned gateway in and out of downtown Vancouver. Slide. The design integrates both the tower and podium as one entity as the facade flows down and gradually transitions from vertical to horizontal ribbons that form the facade of the podium. The tower is contrastingly slim with curvilinear edges that juxtapose and balance the form of the Vancouver House. Slide. Both entrances to the market and social housing are off of Beach Crescent, away from the main public face along Rolston. The location is south-facing and prominent to ensure ample daylighting, visibility, and safety. Slide. The new beach neighborhood extends throughout the underpass, creating a dynamic pedestrian-driven ground plane. The vibrant public realm along Rolston Street is activated through the pedestrian-scale retail frontages and landscape features that allow for the flow and engagement seamlessly through grade-level changes. The dimensions of the interaction and community are heightened by the terracing planes and outdoor balconies in the podium. Slide. The shape of the podium maximizes the distance between dwellings and the off-ramp with a large centralized outdoor amenity space provided as a buffer. This opens up and creates a vibrant community space. The terracing of the podium creates the natural transition from tower to the ground plane and also allows ample cellen light to enter the open space. The analysis of how the design reacts in the context were closely studied, including view cones, plate size, tower height relating to shadows, and views from adjacent buildings. The next series of slides summarized the extensive studies made for each of these categories throughout the process. Slide. This diagram shows the Queen Elizabeth view cone traversing the site at the northern tip. Therefore, the placement of the tower is far clear of any encroachment. Slide. The design of the building is derived as the exploration of massing scale within the urban context. The floor plate size undulates throughout the tower with an average of 6,500 square feet. Taking various cuts, one can see it is within the range and scale of the surrounding towers. Above Level 42, the tower contrastingly is much smaller than the neighboring tower by over 40%. Slide. The relocation of the tower significantly reduces the shadowing at the park. Shadow studies taken during the Vernal Equinox show the tower shadow crosses May and Lauren Brown Park between 9:50 AM and 11:00 AM. Slide. And does not cast any shadows to the neighboring towers in the afternoon. Slide. Slide. In the fall equinox, tower shadow crosses May and Lauren Brown Park from 9:30 to 10:40 AM. Slide. And does not cast additional shadows to the adjacent towers in the afternoon. Slide. Slide again. Next four slides show the view analysis taken from four adjacent buildings. The effect of the views from the main living areas are minimized with the tower's rounded shape and new placement at 100 feet north of Beach Crescent. This is showing at, oh, sorry, slide, please? Slide? Oh, hello? Yeah, this is showing Park West. Slide. At Icon One. Slide. Aqua. Slide. And Absur. Two. Slide. The design of 601 Beach Crescent will be a great addition to the community in both the macro and micro scale. As part of the city's higher building policy, the design will be a landmark in the skyline with the responsibility of providing leadership in sustainable design, engaging and leadership in engaging dynamic public urban space. We have worked diligently in cooperation with the city in the past three years, and we look forward to continuing this collaboration with reasonable conditions during the development planning stage. This completes my presentation, and I thank you all for your time.
Thank you so much for your presentation. And now it's a chance for council to ask questions. Remember, this is the only time you have in this process that you can ask questions to both staff and the applicant, the only time you can ask questions to the applicant. You can ask staff questions after the public have spoken, have presented to us, but this is the only time to ask questions of the applicant. So I will look at the queue, and I've got Counselor Swanson. Counselor Swanson, please go ahead up to five minutes.
Yes, thank you. I think all of my questions are for staff.
Okay, you can save them, or you can go down.
Why are there the social housing units in this building valued at $434,000 each when the social housing units in the other big building that we approved the other day were valued at $700,000 each? Seems like that's a huge difference.
Staff there?
Jerry Evans, Director of Real Estate Services. The estimate that we have for 601 Beach has been done by our quantity surveyors, and so that is based on this particular form of development. You may get a variation in the actual cost of social housing between projects. I think one of the ones that you may be referring to is a recent rezoning that was approved by council on Nelson Street. That was a passive house project on a relatively small constrained site with high densities, and that may have been the reason for the difference in cost per unit for that particular project.
Almost $300,000 difference per unit. Okay, so what is the plan for schools? I understand that the current nearby school is already at capacity.
Got somebody coming on the line? Maybe you're on mute.
Mr. Mayor, I know they were having some troubles with the phone in the planning office there, so if we can just give them a moment, I'm sure they're going to get on in a second.
Sure thing.
Maybe you could stop my timer in the meantime.
I can do that.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just checking in with them, if we can just hold another second.
Thanks very much. If there's a big problem, we could take a quick recess.
Hello, this is rezoning staff. Can you hear us?
We can, yeah.
Excellent, fantastic. We moved to the boardroom.
Okay, great.
Thank you for your patience.
No problem.
With respect, oh, go ahead, ahead.
Don't go ahead, just like Counselor Swanson know, I'll let the clock, I'll give you a bunch of seconds back, so please go ahead. What's your answer?
Counselor Swanson for the question. An application is anticipated shortly from Vancouver School Board to develop a school site at Coal Harbor, which has anticipated capacity of 320 new students. Subsequent to that school application, the school site in Nelson Park is being developed, providing additional school capacity. If the city falls within the downtown area, these schools are anticipated to serve this site. Thank you.
But Coal Harbor is quite a ways. Is that what you said? There's going to be one in Coal Harbor?
Right.
That's correct. The school board is reallocating school stations in the downtown area.
So kids who live here would have to walk to Coal Harbor or bus there or something? That's quite a ways. Okay. I'm just wondering why we didn't put the, all the money, like the extra 12 million into more housing at that site? And also, I'm wondering about, if you figure that the 12 million would make 19 units, which is 631 per unit, as opposed to the 434 that you're saying that these social housing units will cost?
Jerry Evans, Director of Real Estate Services. To the first question, in the invitation to offer and the subsequent sales contract that the city entered into with the developer, there was a requirement to deliver 152 units of non-market housing turnkey to the city onsite, and for the purposes of the invitation to offer, that was a fixed requirement to give bidders on that invitation to offer process clarity on their commitments. To the second question, the, sorry, could you repeat the second question again, Counselor Swanson?
Why is the, you're saying that the 12 million in excess that they're going to pay would support 19 units, which is, again, pretty expensive, $634,000 each?
There is, yes, there is a significant contingency factor in that estimate because we're anticipating finding locations for those additional units over the next 12 to 24 months in terms of potential sites that we could land those units.
Include land, too? Is that what you're saying?
No, it doesn't include land. It's actually the construction costs, so it's hard and soft costs of construction plus a significant contingency to factor in potential cost escalations, those kind of things.
Last question, sorry. Is there going to be a rich door and a poor door?
We're just at five minutes, so we can perhaps conclude this question?
It could be a yes or no answer.
It's how you frame it, I think.
Yeah, it's, counsel, can you hear me? It's Andrea Gilman, Senior Planner with ACCS Affordable Housing. There are two separate entrances here, and as mentioned in the applicant's presentation, they're both prominent entrances and both off of Beach Avenue. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Weeb.
Yeah, my first question's to the proponent. The enhanced UDP board, I'm wondering how you felt that process went and how you felt it increased and made the project more viable?
Hi, this is Candice speaking. We're going to UDP, actually, we found it very helpful because it was, we were really looking at the master plan and context and kind of architectural aspects of the project. And we gained a lot of insight on, you know, the siting of the project and how the podium can be improved, and we worked quite hard to, kind of, to meet those comments.
And then in the project we have in front of us, it talks about a staff recommendation of reducing the height. How does this affect the design of the building, and how is the rest of the context of the building going to be included in that reduced height?
Actually, in the Urban Design Panel, we did get a recommendation that the height should be more, the height difference between us and the Vancouver House should be more prominent, should be like a bigger difference, actually. But then, after working with the planners, they do want us to cap at the 535. It's not too much of a difference from what we have now. Right now, we have 535 plus the parapet, a 20-foot parapet. So in the design, it would not affect the overall concept or the design too much.
Okay, and then a lot of the comments, it talks about integration to kind of the public realm. Can you talk a little bit more about how this building's going to integrate into the public realm, recognizing it's kind of a new area being developed?
Right. Especially because of the overpass, we really have an interesting space there, below and above. So on the ground plane, it's something that we work with the city quite intensive about how to mitigate the height difference between the, right on Rolston, there's a seven-meter difference. So how do we bring people along that road and being under the underpass? So how do we create place-making or reduce the scale of the retail so that it's more human scale? And also, creating the amenity platform, we have another layering that looks into the space as well. So I think that the layering of the podium really creates this vibrant area, and we have people walking also along the off-ramp as well, looking into the space. So this ties into the entire master plan of the new beach neighborhood.
Okay, and my final question, I think it's more to staff, and maybe you could ask it to answer as well, is we've recognized a need for public washrooms as an amenity and recognizing this is going to be a pretty important public space being created here under the bridge. I'm wondering if that has been contemplated, is having a public washroom as part of that public amenity to be integrated in the building design?
Hi, thanks for that question. This is Yan Zhang, Res zoning Center. So we don't have a condition to secure a public washroom as part of this rezoning application, but certainly that would be something that Parks Board staff could look at and then integrate into the future loop design, have, looking into the possibility of a public washroom.
Do we have, recognizing this new public realm being created, is there public washrooms elsewhere in the public realm, or could this be an opportunity for us to include one?
Yeah, I think, you know, with the upcoming loop design, certainly there would be opportunity for enhanced public realm, including amenities.
But this could be an optimal place, they'll probably be built first.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think even through the urban design, through the development subsequent permitting stage, we can look at that possibility, and I'll certainly take that comment.
Okay, I guess to the developer, could you see an opportunity to create a public washroom if that was an amenity that the staff was looking for, recognizing that seen as a need in the area?
Hi, this is Germanoff from Pinnacle International. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Yes, you know, I think we can work with staff to see if there's some opportunities there.
Perfect, really appreciate that. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you, Counselor Weeb. I do hear somebody, perhaps, that needs to be muted, maybe you're eating carrots or something, I can hear that in the background, so move on to Counselor Hardwick, up to five minutes, please.
Yes, I think my questions are more for staff, if that's okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I'd like to talk about the city's higher buildings policy. My understanding is that the higher buildings policy is primarily located in the central business district and not on the north shore of Falls Creek. Okay, well, that's definitely...
Yeah, just ask everybody to mute, we're hearing some noises in the background. So, yeah, I'm just going to stop your clock, Counselor Hardwick. So if everybody could just check their mutes to make sure they're muted, because we are hearing some unfortunate noises in the back. And Counselor Hardwick, go ahead.
Right, so getting back into the city's higher buildings policy, my read on this is that this is almost 20% higher than contemplated in the higher buildings policy, except for the central business district, and this is on the north shore of Falls Creek. So I'm looking for an explanation of why such a significant exception to the Falls Creek North ODP, which talks for, which calls for buildings of 10 to 38 floors, has been, the exemption has been provided here. I'm not understanding this. I'm, I'm not understanding this. Why?
Over to staff.
Hi, uh, this is Yan Zhang again. Um, I think the intent of the higher building policy, the originally intended and still the current intent is to create that dome-shaped skyline. And then, in the twenty seventeen, um, revision to the higher building, it was, uh, decided that, uh, there could be a gateway, uh, of the two bridgehead, that is, the Granville Bridgehead and then the Barra Bridgehead, to mark the entrance to downtown. So, um, they would be secondary peak, um, secondary to the downtown CBD peak, but they could go higher than the existing policy height.
So, um, in other words, this is a decision made by the prior council in twenty seventeen that, uh, that, uh, took exception with the prior existing policy around higher buildings. Is that accurate? It was twenty seventeen?
I think it was, uh, initially amended in twenty fourteen, and then subsequently, I think, um, that was further amended, uh, to include a third, uh, gateway into downtown, which is from, um, Divida.
Um, is that, uh, detailed in the report? I didn't see the, uh, the progression of policy changes that, uh, that you described, described from twenty fourteen to twenty seventeen.
Yes, it is, uh, described in page three of the policy report.
Right, I'll have to go back in and look at that.
As well as page seven of the report.
Okay, um, I'll move on. Again, my, my point being that, uh, these have been changes over time. They're, that are fairly recent. Another observation on the shadow studies, I listened to with interest there, was that there was no shadow analysis, unless I missed it, for the winter solstice, uh, December twenty-first. Uh, it would be instructive to understand why staff, um, I don't see that in this referral report. I did not see it in the referral report. Uh, can you, uh, talk a little bit more about the timeline on the shadow studies, please? Staff's treatment of shadow studies.
Hello, this is, uh, Miguel Castillo, the urban planner with Urban Design. Um, there is a study included in the package. There is no study, because it couldn't include everything in the report, but there is a study included in the, in the res- resounding submission about the, uh, winter, um, impact.
Uh, could you point me to that for my reference?
So, in the package, at the end of the package of the submission, um, I'm going to point to the page, uh, one hundred and nine. Of the submission, there is a study provided by the applicant.
Right, but it doesn't cover the winter solstice, we're only looking at summer solstice?
Yeah, there is, there is on page one hundred and nine.
All right, then I missed it, I'll go and have another look at that. Um, my final question again, uh, to staff is the, is the, the choice of location for housing and social housing, uh, in particular, uh, I'm assuming that the market housing, the condominiums, will be at the higher end of vote for luxury buyers. And, um, I'm concerned about the social housing units being within ten meters of Granville Street traffic. Uh, can you comment a little bit about the, the positioning of the market versus social housings within the building itself?
We've got five minutes, so if you could just make it a short answer, that'd be great. Counselor Hardwick, you're going to ask staff questions, uh, questions in the next round as well.
Thank you. I'll, I'll, I'll wait for, come back on that then, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor Boyle, up to five minutes.
Uh, thank you very much, and most of my questions, um, have been answered. Um, the one I have left is around the public art contribution, recognizing, uh, that that is a conversation the public is often very interested in too. Um, it looked like there was just a bit less than seven hundred thousand going towards public art, and I'm hoping staff could tell us how, uh, what that might go towards, how that decision gets made if, if the, um, developer will have a role in deciding how that public art money is spent.
Hi, this is Yan Zhang again. Um, so, at the rezoning stage, we do secure the funding for the public art, and then the actual public art will be, uh, going through a process involving a peer review, um, with the, um, the public art committee. And the developers, and they can come forth with their ideas, and we can, we want to hear from the residents and communities as well.
Uh, okay, so I guess I'm conscious of the chandelier situation, um, and interested in whether, uh, this funding, uh, will have, uh, as you said, more of a, um, public input opportunity and how it's, uh, spent. Will the process be any different from the process for that, for that, uh, chandelier? I guess is how I can phrase that.
Right, it's Yan Zhang again. I can't really speak to the chandelier, um, selection process, but we certainly have a very rigorous, um, process, um, led by staff from ACCS, as well as the, um, Public Art Committee, uh, which includes local residents as well. And so, I'm hopeful that there will be a, um, outcome that's, um, that is meaningful to the community.
Uh, okay, great, that's, um, all of my questions for now, and also, I apologize for crunching carrots.
Ah, you're the culprit, okay. Thank you. Counselor Dominado, up to five minutes.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, my questions are all to the applicant at this time. Um, my first question is with respect to the, um, terracing on the podium. Um, is that going to be publicly accessible or simply accessible to residents of the building?
The, the terracing in the podium is, uh, is for the residents in the building.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, with respect to the, um, there's commercial units, I believe, uh, at ground level, um, how many units are there? What, um, what kind of size are we talking about in terms of commercial units?
Um, our commercial space, we have about twenty-seven thousand square feet, and right now, it's divided into eight or nine units.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then two more, uh, questions. I'm just wondering if you could speak to, um, uh, the, the building and the, from an engineering standpoint in terms of seismic, uh, resistance and resilience, uh, in the context of, of the environment we live in? If you could speak to that a bit?
Um, well, we, we don't have a, uh, structural engineer on, on the call, but, um, of course, we will be designing to the, the seismic, um, seismic guidelines that we need to build to.
Okay, okay, appreciate that. Um, and then, last question, just around, um, if, uh, council approves the rezoning application tonight, what's the timeframe in terms of, uh, a completed, uh, building ready to move in?
Uh, may I direct this question to, to Pinnacle?
Sure.
Certainly.
Oh, hi, this is, uh, Jim Ralph from Pinnacle International. Um, our timeline would be as, as soon as we can get into the ground. As soon as we can get the obligation approved, we're going to go on with this.
And so, for, I guess, for public context and, and councils is, how many years is that? So, we're in, you know, twenty twenty, late twenty twenty now?
We're going to say, we're going to say hopefully two years, but maybe closer to three.
Okay, uh, thank you. That was my question. All our staff questions after speakers, thank you.
Great, thanks so much. Counselor Kirby Young, up to five minutes.
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, I wanted to direct a couple of questions to the applicant, if I can, uh, because this is the opportunity. And I'm just trying to follow up on Counselor Swanson's questions and get some clarity around the social housing units, um, from the applicant's perspective. Since the commitment and the expectation was for a hundred and fifty-two units on-site, why can't the reference, I believe it was nineteen, um, be delivered here?
Sorry, can you repeat the question, please?
Yes, there was reference to a difference between the, the, uh, the expectation and the obligation for a hundred and fifty-two social housing units. And then there was a, some information from the staff on the difference between the percentage versus the absolute number of units, and the fact that a number could be delivered off-site through the twelve million CAC. And I, I just want to get real, very clear on why those units cannot be delivered here on-site.
Uh, we, we are delivering the, um, expected number of units, which is the one hundred and fifty-two units. The percentage difference is because the market house units, uh, unit count was increased, so therefore, the overall percentage changed. But the number of units is, is what is required. So, we are fulfilling what we need to be building on the site.
So, can you recap for me then? So, there are a hundred and fifty-two expected and one fifty-two on-site?
Yes, there's one hundred and fifty-two expected, and we are building one hundred and fifty-two on-site.
And the other twelve million CAC is due to?
Uh, that, I, specifically, I don't, um, can't, would staff be able to answer that part of the question?
Okay, maybe, maybe I'll move on. Um, when, in, in terms of the original acquisition of the site and the expectation, as rezoning was not guaranteed in terms of height, so, is this, if council were not to approve this application tonight, with what project or what would you be proceeding with in terms of a project makeup on the site?
Um, well, we, in our process with working with the city, I think we have, um, we have worked hard to, to kind of mitigate the height issue. And, um, I believe our, right now, our, our proposal is, um, at, at the right, at, at least in the, within the context of, um, of the design in, in the master plan. So, I, I don't have a, a direct answer if that would be, you know, that would be changed, because we've, we've been working under the, um, the, that it would be five hundred and thirty-five feet.
So, you've been working on the assumption that you would be granted additional height, even though that's not guaranteed? Um, I, I just want to be really clear about this, because there's no guarantee of additional height. So, presumably, the applicant was prepared to build within the permitted height without a rezoning?
Uh, no, we, we definitely respect the, the, um, the process, but right now, we have done quite a bit of extensive studies to show the, um, why it is at this height.
So, why is that? I, I, I'm, I'm looking for some rationale or, or, um, understanding as to why that is.
This should be a more of a staff question. Sorry, this is Joe from Pinnacle International.
Okay, I'll direct that one to staff, please.
This is Miguel Castillo again, uh, the urban planner with Urban Design. Uh, perhaps I can elaborate a little bit in terms of the height, consideration for higher height for this site, uh, to help, uh, the conversation. Um, I guess there are three key aspects to consider when there's additional height for this specific site. One is the contextual fit, the second one would be the building contribution to the city skyline, and the third, shadowing impact. I guess I'm going to talk about the first one, contextual fit, which refers to the relationship with the Vancouver House, uh, which is approved at four nine seven, uh, feet. Um, so the consideration for this site is in that relationship with that, uh, tower. That's, that's the key issue with, um, the, um, contextual fit and the consideration for the higher building. Um, I'm not sure if I responded to your question, Counselor?
Do you feel that for contextual fit, you need to go higher than Vancouver House? Why?
Well, it's not, it's not exactly matching the Vancouver House. Obviously, it's going higher on one side, but actually, condition, uh, rezoning condition, uh, looks for, uh, diminishing the height on the eastern side of the tower. So, it's counted, so, it's kind of an average, so it's higher on one side, but lower on the other side.
Okay, but conceivably, you, could you argue that it could be lower also for contextual fit? Like, the Vancouver House could be the higher building and yours could be the lower?
Well, there is, there could be some little room, I guess, uh, to frame the gateway. Uh, we staff, uh, we're looking at, into something similar between the Vancouver House and, uh, this, uh, development.
Okay, what's the average size of the social housing, please?
Counselor Kirby Young, we're just at five minutes.
Okay.
So, uh, if this is the staff, of course, you have, uh, lots of time. And if, if folks really wanted to, we could ask for, I'm just going to check with the clerk, but I think we can ask for a second round of questions here. Is that correct, clerk?
This is the clerk, Mayor Stewart, and yes, if that, excuse me, if that is council's will, but it should be done by motion.
Yes, absolutely.
I would appreciate that, I would like to move for a second round, please.
Okay, again, if it, if it, really, I just suggest that if you have questions to the applicant, because we do have, uh, plenty of time for questions for staff after we hear from speakers, so...
I, I understand, thank you.
Okay, uh, so you have a motion on the floor, do you have a second or for that?
Second, Counselor Dominado.
Well, do yeas and nays, all in favor say yea?
Yea, yea, yea.
Oppose say nay? Great, that's unanimous, thanks. Uh, so Counselor Kirby Young, uh, this, I'm just going to proceed now through the Counselor Carr and Counselor Frye, who are the first round, but you can put yourself back on the bottom. Counselor Carr, uh, go ahead, up to five minutes.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor, and, um, most of my questions have been answered. I just have one that's, um, that is, um, asked, which is to the applicant. Um, uh, you've chosen to satisfy the low emission green building requirement, um, uh, in your, in your project, but because you are also falling under the higher building policy, which requires, uh, a much more, um, uh, dynamic leadership and sustainability and carbon neutrality, uh, staff have worked with you, as it says in the report, uh, to create specific targets for your project that significantly enhance the passive design and reduce carbon emissions by a further fifty percent beyond the policy. So, what did you do in specific? What were the, what were the actual, um, design elements that got you to fifty percent below that, that policy and towards passive design?
Hi, uh, first, I go with, uh, B C Urban Design here. Um, we had meetings with the Director of Sustainability since twenty seventeen, and were asked to provide, uh, leadership over the current, uh, rezoning, uh, policy, uh, were specifically asked to provide a greenhouse gas intensity of less than three kilograms per meter square, which is, uh, the toughest target in, um, all the policies applicable to this project. If I want to briefly, uh, mention how we got to that target, uh, we're providing a, a compact architectural design, um, plus a high-efficiency building envelope system, including, um, triple glaze systems, uh, uh, thermally blocking balconies and, um, insulation on all the walls, a lot of insulation on the walls, plus high-efficiency mechanical systems. In addition to that, a low-carbon energy system is proposed to be built on-site, which is, uh, mostly driven by heat pump systems to provide, uh, the cleanest heating and cooling systems, uh, available to the building.
Wow, all those are, are sounding very much like they're moving towards passive house. Um, what extra would you have to do to achieve a passive house standard?
Uh, what we've done was, um, well, we've provided, um, um, high-efficiency systems on the building envelope that will reduce the demand of the building to, uh, be close to a passive house level. In addition to that, uh, we've provided the passive cooling measures on the building, including, um, uh, distributed balconies, horizontal and vertical beams, uh, to mitigate, um, solar heat gain, uh, in the winter, in the summer time, and enhance it during the winter time.
Yeah, good. Okay, that, that's very interesting. Thank you very much, and, um, that's it for my questions, Mr. Mayor.
No problem, thank you. Oh, whoops, I, oh, I'm not muted. Okay, uh, Counselor Frye, up to, uh, five minutes, please. Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Um, I'm not sure I have five minutes worth of questions for the applicant, but, um, I realize we'll be coming back to staff later. Uh, reviewing some of the, the earlier comments from the UDP, I'm, I'm curious, uh, about the cladding material that's being employed here, and, and how does that interact with the, uh, the Vancouver House across the street? There seems to be a shinier material, is that being proposed?
Hi, so then, the, um, the final material, the cladding, we're still, will be still developing. Um, with regards to being, uh, well, in, in the design of it, we, we wanted to create the textural, um, element so that there will be a different scale in, um, that matches the, the Vancouver House. So, the actual envelope design, we're still, will still be advancing in the next stage of design.
So, and what, uh, what informs the envelope design as far as energy efficiency and, and reflectiveness? And are there considerations there when we're talking about low emission buildings?
Oh, hello, yeah. So, uh, regarding the question, we are working closely with, um, our sustainability consultant, um, Frashy, who has just spoken, um, earlier on the facade systems. So, those will be considered, um, uh, as we develop the envelope.
Okay, and, and so, and what are we doing to, um, as far as the, the, the ground-level landscaping? How has that improved since the UDP comments?
The ground-level landscaping, um, we, we've been working with our, um, landscape designer as well, because, uh, some of the comments from the, the urban design panel wanted us to create more, uh, more event space, um, in, in, in the area, and also to have the planting to mitigate the height, uh, level changes within the, um, within the retail street a lot of often. So, we've been trying to, we incorporate some terracing and also, uh, different planting, um, in seating areas that have been introduced into our design now.
And, and these will be... And and these will be of the public realm?
Yes, yes, these will be part of the public.
And further to some councillor Weeb's considerations around public washrooms, even that might be. Okay, well, that's that's helpful to know.
Thank you.
Uh, I guess the rest of my questions really are for staff at this point, then. Um, uh, I'm, we we're hearing a lot about issues around school capacity. And what are we anticipating for the number of families that will be uh, living in this in in this uh, building? And 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 what would, given the the new development across the street, obviously, or across the bridge, uh, where where are we at with school capacity?
Uh, thank you for the question, councillor Frye. Um, we have been working with the um, school district. Um, and as noted in earlier uh, comment, uh, there is an application coming in shortly from them that we are anticipating at the moment. We have staff ready for for the new Coal Harbour School, which is intended to have a capacity of three hundred and twenty students. After that application comes in and that school is built subsequently, uh, the school set at Nelson Park is slated to be redeveloped. So we've been working with the school board and they are anticipating increasing the capacity in the downtown area substantially over the over the coming years.
But nothing in that immediate, that those are both quite far away from this particular location. There's nothing anticipated for the downtown south region or west and south even. Obviously not, no, I'm assuming. Um, you on the on the hundred and fifty units or hundred and fifty-two units of turnkey social housing, uh, just these are, the the rates of affordability will ultimately be entirely up to the city of Vancouver to determine, is that, am I correct in that assumption?
Hi, Dan Garrison from Housing Policy. That uh, that's correct. These will be, uh, the responsibility of the applicant is to build and transfer these units turnkey to the city. And then it is up to uh, the city of Vancouver, ultimately through councils, to determine the affordability level.
And 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 how would we determine that? What's what's what are the criteria that would um, allow us to determine affordability on those kind of units, just looking at it?
Uh, so there's a, there is a typical process through which uh, uh, we look at um, we look at that. We we um, uh, do a procurement process and ultimately use the units to a nonprofit uh, operator, uh, generally speaking. And so um, through that procurement process, we'd be looking at what's the deepest level of affordability that we could be achieved, that could be achieved in those units um, balanced against uh, are sort of the management of the overall portfolio.
So in theory, we could. We're at the five. Oh, okay, all right. And we we do have a second round, so councillor Frye, you want to go back on, uh, but I'm gonna go over to councillor Dejanova next for the last questions of the first round.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
I was just about to sign on to Webex. I'll uh, I'll do, I'll do it this way first for my first round of questions. I may have to go back and I'll tie myself here. Um, just wanted to check um, check on first of all, a question for staff. How tall is, I was, I was just trying to look this up. How tall is Vancouver House? Is it taller?
Hi, this is Miguel Castillo again. Um, Vancouver House was approved to four nine seven feet to top of the roof. Um, but also has a tall parapet, which is at five oh six feet.
So it's, sorry, can you say that again? How many feet?
At four ninety-seven for the roof and four, oh, and five oh six for the parapet.
Okay, all right, and were the exact same policies followed? Because I understand in reading the report that and just um, listening to and seeing the staff presentation that this was to be the gateway. So I'm I'm just trying to see, are the building heights going, was the idea here that the building heights matched?
So the 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 policy uh, calls for two billion at four to five. Um, however, as I said, uh, Vancouver House was approved higher and staff are not necessarily matching, near thinking of matching the height of the Vancouver House, but having a contrast in terms of the the crown of the tower.
Okay, so really, when we're talking about a gateway, we're not looking at, you know, the sides being parallel, parallel in height to each other?
Uh, the concept itself is kind of contrasting, so uh, the higher building here is actually helping uh, to that contrast.
Okay, so this would then be, this, so the current, so the actual height that we'll see, so so Vancouver House has two different heights, four ninety-seven and five oh six. So at its highest point, it's five oh six, is that correct?
It's correct.
So this will be five thirty-five?
This will be five thirty-five to top of parapet facing the Grand Bell Bridge. But the uh, staff are seeking uh, condition to count it, to count the top of the of the building. So that means that the eastern part of that tower will be lower actually than the Vancouver House.
Okay, thanks so much. My next questions, um, I'll try and get through them in one round, we'll see if I need to. Uh, are regarding the the hundred and fifty, is it fifty-two or fifty-three? I have to check here. Uh, units of turnkey housing that would come back to uh, the city of Vancouver uh, through this application. Uh, I'm just wondering if I, and I couldn't find it in the report. Uh, and I looked, I not only looked through all of the reports, but also back to the referral report. Would we be looking at any funding for this through the uh, community housing incentive program? So it would take funding above and beyond what we're currently seeing now to complete these units?
Councillor Sandra Gillman, uh, senior planner with ACCS Affordable Housing. The um, the community housing incentive program, the CHIP program, is designed specifically for nonprofits developing affordable housing on their land to give them a boost for
Okay.
uh, development of shelter rate and hills rate units. So we would not be able to use it here.
Just wanted to be very clear about that because I didn't see it in the report, so thank you. And I understand that it doesn't mean that a nonprofit operator couldn't be brought in, but these would be owned by the city, is that correct?
That's correct. We would lease, do a long-term lease to uh, the selected operator.
Okay, thanks so much. And then just a, another quick question on sort of the funding, the long-term funding, either through the city or looking at sort of um, funding, you know, for the units or the or the way that this is moving forward. Part of it's a question for staff and part of it's a question to the applicant, and that is, uh, have BC Housing been approached sort of at the beginning of this process on the specific application? Staff had any conversations with the applicant and suggested that BC Housing, uh, perhaps you do see sometimes funding earmarked uh, in certain communities, uh, towards certain units to help with affordability. Uh, for instance, looking at either uh, working with a nonprofit, coming in hand in hand on that, uh, that BC Housing uh, may maybe offering funding too, so just wondered.
We're just at five minutes.
Okay, so maybe staff could answer that and I'll come back on the queue. Thanks.
We're moving to our second round now. Uh, councillor Kirby Young, you have up to five minutes.
Yeah, thank you very much, appreciate it. And follow-up questions to the applicant. I'm just trying to get some clarity in my head around um, sort of the expectations and obligations as it related to the sale. Um, when the site was acquired and the expectation for the hundred and fifty-two social units and what the existing zoning was. And so I just want confirmation in the applicant that you understood, am I correct, that that was the obligation, the sale, to deliver those units within the existing zoning?
Oh, hi, this is uh, Jim from Pinnacle International, uh, yes.
Okay, so why do we have, I I I guess what's the, what's the rationale uh, for the existing, for not seeing an increase in social units? But going for a rezoning and additional height?
So uh, we're gonna direct that question to staff.
Okay, um, and can you tell me, please, um, what the average size of the social housing units are in terms of square footage?
Hi, um, I, we don't have the um, I don't have the average, but we do have a very prescriptive um, outline of what the hundred and fifty-two units need to be. And they include um, twenty units of studio, housing sixty-nine, one bedroom, eight, one bedroom accessible, thirty-two bedrooms and twenty-five, three bedrooms, which total hundred and fifty-two units. So we are designing towards that um, prescriptive um, outline.
Okay, and do you have at your, do you have handy the square footage for a one-bedroom social housing unit versus a one-bedroom strata unit?
I will check quickly. Thank you.
If you don't have that, that's okay, I can ask that question of staff later, provide some time for them to find it.
Sorry about that, I will find it and have it ready.
Okay, thank you. I'll leave it there, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, over to councillor Swanson, up to five minutes.
Yeah, these are for the applicant. Um, is the terrace in the building available for social housing and condo residents to use?
Yes.
That's not on the first floor?
Uh, no, the terraces are actually um, located on the third floor and subsequent fourth, sixth and eighth. So they are all meant to be amenity terraces for the residents.
All of the residents?
Uh, yes.
So social housing and condo residents?
Uh, right now, we don't have specifically the the accessible point, but the third floor, um, third floor amenity terrace is for um, is for the social housing uh, amenity.
Mm-hmm.
And the smaller terraces that are placed um, on on fourth, sixth and eighth are for the market housing.
So they're separated, separate amenity areas as well as separate doors?
Um, at the moment, they are separate because um, as as these hundred and fifty-two units are are turnkey back to the city, the operate, the operation or requirements require that. But if um, working with the city, we we could perhaps um, have other um, other considerations in 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 the future.
Okay, that would be good. Second question, I'm just wondering if you could give me a ballpark estimated price for some of the condos on the top floors?
Jim, this is uh, this is Jim Rolfe from Pinnacle International. We don't have that information for you at the moment. It would be marking.
So we'd be looking like between five and ten million, probably?
No.
More?
No, no.
You're not gonna say?
It depends on the size of the unit, right? So it's, it it it, so we, it's very, it's difficult for us to kind of answer at that time. And I think once we move forward with this next stage, then we can uh, get to the next step, which would be uh, looking at square footage of prices.
Okay, thank you.
That's good for me.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Dominado, second round. Yep, go ahead.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, my question's to the applicant. Um, just in terms of the uh, building architecture and design, do um, all of the strata units and the um, social housing units have outdoor space? Not the, I'm not talking about the shared amenities space, but I'm talking about balconies or decks or any, um, could you speak to that in the context of COVID and some of the concerns we've seen around accessible uh, outdoor space?
Uh, yes, all units, um, both social housing and market housing have outdoor balcony spaces.
Okay, all of them, okay.
Oh.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then um, last question, where's the parking access? I assume it's underground parking, but what, where's that accessed from?
Access is located on uh, Beach Crescent.
Beach.
Um, more to the east side of the site.
And um, how many units of parking is proposed?
We have uh, three hundred and ninety-seven parking spaces.
And I see them also bike spaces?
Yes, nine hundred.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thanks councillor Frye. Up to five? Oh, uh, thanks. Um, so uh, I just had had a few more questions on the on the social housing side, uh, actually for the applicant. Um, and looking through some of the UDP comments around livability and the adjacent to the adjacency to the bridge deck and and thinking back to when the Continental used to be in that general area and it, and I think there was a comment from the UDP about it might be unlivable even. Um, how how are you mitigating those those comments and concerns around around livability facing the bridge deck?
Oh, thank you for the question. We we've we configured, we configured um, part of the podium in order to um, create this buffer, which is that outdoor amenity space, to make it wider so that it maximizes the distance between the units and and the bridgehead. And actually, most of our um, social housing units actually don't face that side. It also faces on the news and also um, on on Beach Crescent as well.
Okay, so so the the south face, I guess I'm looking at the 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 rendering from the resubmission in the documents. And the the south face piece, that's not social housing then? That that sort of pivots against the bridge deck?
That that is, that is.
That is the social housing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
On on the corner of Ralston and Beach Crescent, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I guess I, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sort of, so it does seem to be still sort of, so you're saying it's changed from the the resubmitted rendering?
Yes, it's been quite, uh, pulled back quite a bit.
Okay, okay, um, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess then back to um, uh, staff and and to my questions of Mr. Garrison earlier about um, how we as the city um, would define the social housing. And I guess just to follow through on that, so we could really set this, if in theory, all at hills rate, what would, what would be the determinant factor for how we determine the the affordability of social housing units?
Uh, hi, yeah, Dan Garrison, Housing Policy. Uh, so when we uh, do a procurement process related to this, there's a number of factors that are included. We look at housing uh, need uh, in the area and in our overall stock. Um, we look at the overall portfolio of housing that is uh, being delivered to determine whether there's uh, need to land the maximum level of affordability on this site or whether there's an opportunity to spread the affordability across a number of sites. So there are a number of uh, aspects we look at, um, but it does start with an assessment of our housing need, uh, housing, uh, social housing targets um, and those those sorts of aspects. Uh, from there, we look to um, actually have the non-market, nonprofit operators who apply under that procurement, under that that call um, to to do the best they can to make it uh, an offering to see how deeply they can set the affordability. And we we've had a number of projects where nonprofits are able to bring really good offers to the table, either from good financing, um, where they're able to still make a lease payment to the city and provide deep affordability, or in some cases where um, they've been able to move other uh, other sites um, that they have to create redevelopment sites from other rotations. So there's a number of sort of those kind of benefits that we look, can we, can we sort of uh, generate multiple benefits from one site? So there are a range of aspects that um, staff look at through the procurement process. But again, ultimately, it lands with um, the decision of of the level of affordability in the building, uh, resting with council.
Well, that's that's reassuring and kind of exciting to think about. Um, in in the event that there was a supportive housing, would that uh, cha- partially change the property classification and the taxation of those units? As from BC assessment?
Yes, the the provincial government determines um, properties that are uh, uh, that are listed as class three or categorized as class three supportive housing, um, and those would be statutorily exempt from property taxes. Um, the intent usually in our inclusionary program is not to make these into supportive housing buildings. Um, however, that doesn't prevent us from including um, units for lower income households that may require supports. Um, and we have done that in several of our um, uh, of the inclusionary uh, buildings, particularly where there can be support provided through Vancouver Coastal Health or BC. particularly where there can be support provided through Vancouver Coastal Health or B C Housing or other, um, provincial agencies.
Great, thanks, Mr. Garrison.
Thanks, that's five minutes on councillor Boyle. Just, uh, to remind council about the, uh, prices of, of, uh, of rents in the social housing units, councillor Swanson has put forward a motion where we're going to be looking into exactly that, including an inventory from what I remember, so, um, there'll be plenty of time for discussion during that, uh, when that, uh, comes to council. Uh, over to councillor Boyle.
Uh, thank you, so, um, I think this is a question for staff first at least, um, I'm hoping you can help me understand the, um, the public benefit piece of this project. Um, my understanding is our C A C negotiations are, um, in part to capture the land lift, and so I'm just confused, um, uh, because the hundred and fifty-two units of social housing were a condition of the sale of the land originally, I'd assumed that would have been part of the, um, land value, and this rezoning is adding a substantial amount more strata market housing, um, and so I'm trying to understand how those, uh, that original requirement of social housing counts as a public benefit with the, um, substantial upzoning that's being proposed in this rezoning?
Jerry Adams, Director of Real Estate Services. The, the, um, uh, under the existing zoning, uh, the site is zoned for hundred and fifty-two units, however, there is no funding for those units. So the, the public benefit that, um, council is considering at this public hearing is for the delivery of turnkey housing to the city. So those, those are two very different things. And that is, uh, just another note to, to make as well in terms of the, um, hundred and fifty-two units. That was the, the minimum requirement under the invitation to offer. So actually, the developer was required to, uh, uh, develop, um, twenty percent of the growth floor of the building as social housing. In actual fact, the hundred and fifty-two units equate, exceeds twenty percent, so they are, um, they are delivering more than, uh, was required in the invitation to offer by building the, uh, hundred and fifty-two units turnkey to the city.
So what does it mean in terms of the original, uh, sale price if it's zoned to include those units of social housing but not, but they're not funded yet? I'm unclear, I'm unclear what that?
Yes, so, so the zoning allowed for, um, hundred and fifty-two units of social housing, uh, but there was no funding mechanism, and that was the reason why, uh, the actual site remained vacant for, well, it's close to, uh, twenty years now, uh, because there was not, uh, funding to actually construct the social housing on the site.
So the inclusion of those units in the original zoning doesn't function to lower the price that the land goes for in the, in the sale? I'm, I'm trying to understand the land lift still.
So the, essentially, um, this is structured, because this is not, um, a C A C negotiation, this is city-owned land, the invitation to offer was structured that the public benefits were delivered through the invitation to offer and the sales contract. So we stipulated the requirement within that invitation to offer in terms of, um, what the developer had to deliver as part of that redevelopment. Now, of course, council, um, can, uh, through the rezon, uh, through the rezoning process, uh, uh, require an additional C A C, and in actual fact, that is the recommendation in this report, there's an additional twelve point one million cash C A C on top of the, the in-kind, um, C A C that's being delivered for social housing.
Okay, um, that is clearer than it was a few minutes ago for me, so th- thank you for that answer. That's all for me, um, Mayor.
Thanks much, uh, councillor De Genova, up to five minutes. Yes, again.
Oh, great, thanks, I've just switched over. Um, just was hoping, uh, for the answer to the question on B C housing, first from staff, but also then from the applicant, because I know the applicant can reach out separately as well.
Council, it's Sandra Gillman with, uh, A C C S Affordable Housing. Uh, on these inclusionary sites, inclusionary zoning sites where the units are delivered turnkey, we typically have not engaged with B C housing, nor have the applicants typically engaged with B C housing, I'll let the applicant respond obviously, um, on these sites, hoping that B C housing will focus their dollars, you know, primarily similar to our dollars on the nonprofit-owned sites to help those sites get off the ground.
Okay, but if these are nonprofit operators, like, I would assume the city is not going to run this ourselves, we may, you know, if this potentially passes, it's, there would be a nonprofit operator considered, is that correct?
That's correct, we would do a long-term lease, typically a sixty-year lease to a nonprofit, uh, to a nonprofit operator.
Okay, and was there any consideration that there could be more than a hundred and fifty-two units of housing? If, uh, of housing, social housing or non-market housing, if B C housing were involved? Like in the construction financing and just thinking about the difference?
I don't have the answer to that question, I don't know if there's someone else on the line who can speak to that second part of your question?
Well, I'll, I'll, uh, I'll just ask the applicant to answer that question first, because I know I can ask staff questions later, but not the applicant.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, hi, this is, uh, uh, Jim Rolfe from, uh, Pinnacle, um, can, can, sorry, can you repeat the question?
I was just wondering if, um, I mean, I know that there are often times when developers will go into partnership or will engage with B C housing. Uh, the fact that you have a hundred and fifty-two units of non-market housing in here, I'm wondering if, for instance, are you able to, uh, take advantage of their construction financing? Are you working with them? And was there any thought that you might be able to maximize or include more affordable units in this project, um, based on the fact that, you know, there are opportunities for partnerships? Did you reach out to them at all on that?
Uh, we, this is a turnkey, so what we do is we build it and we hand it over to the city, and then the city then goes out and reaches out to, uh, nonprofits or whoever's going to operate the building.
So I understand what it is, but was there ever any thought to do that ahead of time, or did you engage with B C housing and they just?
No, no, we haven't, we haven't.
Okay, thanks so much. Um, a question, thank you very much, I'm just trying to get through my questions in the five minutes I have, and now it's back to staff and, um, hoping that I'm able to ask this question. Um, is the sale of the property, and I know I have to wear my regulator hat here, uh, because landowner hat, land regulator hat, completely different, um, was it subject to rezoning?
Jerry Adams, Director of Real Estate Services. The, um, the invitation to offer, um, anticipates that the, um, purchaser will go through a rezoning process.
Okay, so, so the purchase of the land is subject to the rezoning tonight?
Uh, no, the, the, the purchase has, uh, the, 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 the land's been sold, however, there are requirements, um, attached to that sales contract that require, uh, that they go through a rezoning process.
Okay, sorry, so, so our rezoning process, not, it doesn't stipulate what the rezoning process must be, exactly?
No, it doesn't.
Okay, so any rezoning process, not necessarily this?
Um, applicable, applicable, um, land use policies.
Okay, and sorry if I was using the word subject, you were using the word requirement, but it's good to know. Thanks very much, I really do appreciate that. Um, also wondering just from our staff in housing, if we, um, looking sort of at affordability and long-term maintenance and operation of these specific units, would we think in the long term, so thinking sixty years down the road, you know, the units need some capital upgrades, capital costs, we own them, so we're on the hook for them, a nonprofit operator isn't, how are we going to be looking at that funding and how do we build that into sort of looking at, at this from a City of Vancouver contact?
Just ten seconds.
Okay, I'll have to come back to that, maybe staff can give some a bit of a heads up, thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, councillor Kirby Young, I'll get you next on the queue, but I think you've had two rounds already, no?
I can ask my questions to staff later.
Okay, great, yeah, thanks, that's great, and, uh, that's it on the queue for the, the two rounds of questions, and if it's good with council, we'll move on to, um, hear from, uh, speakers. Great, so, uh, council members are reminded they have up to five minutes to ask questions to public speakers, how are speakers under no obligation to respond to these questions? If not provided, I will ask if speakers are a resident of Vancouver or not, as, uh, our bylaw states. Um, if there are any other speakers for this item in which to speak to council, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by participant code three five seven six six hashtag to get on the list before the close of the speakers list. This number will be, uh, tweeted out and available on the live stream. And we have a bunch of speakers on the line to, um, let's see, I'm just looking here, the first speaker is, uh, I think it's Richard Tam is first. Just ask the clerks to get, get Richard Tam.
Sure, hello?
Hi there, uh, you have up to five minutes, you're first speaker, please go ahead.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, so, uh, like this opportunity to, to discuss, uh, this proposal by Pinnacle, um, yeah, I see really sort of several, uh, benefits in it. I, uh, I am a resident in Vancouver and I do support this, uh, this proposal. Uh, I think the first key area that I think is important is sort of the mixed-use aspects of this project, whereby there is retail at-grade, a delivery of a lot of social housing units, hundred and fifty-two, uh, the market condos aspect of it as well, so it's delivering a variety of housing options, I think, for the area. And I think, uh, yeah, the, the market units, of course, are required as, as, uh, the funding formula for the delivery of these social housing units. Um, the second area that I think, uh, is important to emphasize is the architectural environmental design excellence of, of this project, where, uh, the gateway concept, uh, uh, being a sister development to the Vancouver House and enhancing the Vancouver skyline is, is important. Uh, I think Vancouver is in a unique or special situation where, um, it has the ability to, to, uh, build buildings that are high, that could, uh, attract, um, uh, a variety of developers that, uh, yeah, and essentially projects that can enhance the skyline. Uh, I know other municipalities such as City of Richmond, uh, they are constrained by, uh, the airport nearby and therefore, um, you know, they don't actually have that option. Um, other municipalities within the region such as City of Burnaby are, are really advancing in this regard in terms of density and height, so, uh, I think it's important for City of Vancouver to sort of consider these types of projects, uh, particularly given sort of how constrained we are, uh, in terms of development sites remaining for our downtown. Um, I mean, I had lived in Vancouver for a long time, uh, I've sort of seen how the downtown has developed over time, I, I went to U B C in the early to mid nineties and sort of at that time, the downtown was really not a, a livable area, uh, you know, not much condos, so it's really sort of advanced over a number of years. Um, and it's good to see that the latest projects really consider architectural excellence as, as a major criteria. I think, again, the height of this particular project is appropriate for its location, given this gateway concept, the counterbalance to Vancouver House. I also think that the, um, the curves, the architecture of the building is quite attractive, the various textures and treatments to the skin, uh, the terracing of the podium adds visual interest, creates a variety of green amenity spaces, um, yeah, together with the environmental sustainable design principles that got into the project. So, yeah, I, I think from that perspective, it covers off a number of important criteria for, for planning staff. Um, thirdly, I would say that it delivers a lot of social and economic benefits for Van- City of Vancouver, including, I think it was sixteen hundred construction and, and off-related spin-off jobs, uh, both during and after construction, uh, eighty million dollars of roughly, you know, or close to eighty million dollars of public benefits, including social housing units, public art, uh, you know, adding a lot of retail amenities for the area, I think add, adding vibrancy to, um, you know, the Granville Bridge area together with the development of Vancouver House. So I would say generally that, uh, this is the type of development that City of Vancouver should be promoting, uh, because it will maintain and continue to, uh, enhance Vancouver as a world-class city. Um, and again, I think it's, it's a win-win for the community, for the city, for the developer, where there's a formula for delivering a variety of housing options, including the social housing that, uh, I think this, uh, that's, yeah, it's sort of like a landmark development that would deliver that much for the downtown. With that, uh, I'd be willing to take any questions.
Thanks so much, uh, we don't have any questions on the queue for you, so, uh, just thank you for participating this evening, sir, and, uh, sharing your comments. I'm going to move on to the next speaker, who is, uh, Charles Gauthier. And, uh, councillor, just so you know, the, uh, list of summary correspondence of speakers list has listed if, um, if the speakers have indicated if they're residents or not residents of Vancouver. Mr. Gauthier?
Uh, yes, um, thank you very much for the time, I am a resident of the City of Vancouver, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the Downtown Vancouver Business Improvement Association, and we are in support of this, uh, rezoning proposal, and I'll go into the reasons for that. Uh, first of all, the housing availability, the proposal includes, as you know, a hundred and fifty-two housing, social housing units and three hundred and three market units. From our perspective, these homes will be an important boost to the housing supply. Uh, the residents of this building will contribute to the vibrancy and the economic prosperity of the area and the downtown workforce. And as you know, uh, we do need some body heat, uh, in the downtown area during the pandemic, but certainly after this is over, uh, the new normal, uh, certainly we can benefit from having, uh, an increase in the residential and workforce population downtown. We also support this project because of the unique architecture. This proposal seeks to complete the pair of elegant tall towers on the sides of the Granville Bridge at the entrance to Downtown Vancouver, with the recently completed Vancouver House on the sister site. The land for this development has been set aside under the higher buildings policy, identifying it as a prime site for a landmark building with high-quality creative architecture. Um, and I could tell you, it's been, it was a number of years ago that our organization, uh, was consulted on this particular higher buildings policy, and, um, you know, we had a lot of input from our membership and our board of directors, um, reviewed this and, uh, we're excited about, um, that particular site in conjunction with the Vancouver House, uh, to create this gateway into the downtown, which is the last bullet point I wanted to speak about that's in our letter that we sent to you, uh, yesterday. Uh, the Granville Bridge is a key entry point into the downtown, enhancing this entry will create a stronger sense of arrival to the downtown area. Uh, you heard me speak about this a couple of times yesterday when I spoke to you on some other issues, but, uh, in twenty fifteen, our organization led a public consultation process called Reimagine Downtown Vancouver, we heard from over eleven thousand people, uh, during that process, and, uh, just for a little bit more background, we had engaged S F U Public Square to assist us in doing that consultation, because they had expertise in bringing in different perspectives and viewpoints beyond just the business one. And, uh, during that process, one of the emerging themes was a desire for, and I'm quoting here, majestic new gateways to the city, close quotes. And, uh, again, uh, we see this as, um, this particular proposal, uh, will help achieve that. And yesterday, I spoke to council on the Granville Bridge Connector, that project will further enhance the experience of arriving to downtown by foot, bike, bus and car. So we believe this is, uh, a timely project that's in front of you to build a grand tower at this gateway location to complement the improvements to the public realm on the bridge, which you haven't yet decided on, but you'll, you'll have that discussion, um, my understanding is, um, on the twenty-ninth of, of this month. So we look forward to the benefits that this particular project is proposing and what it will do for the downtown area. Those are my comments.
Thanks so much, Mr. Gauthier, I don't see anybody on, uh, the queue to ask you questions, so I'll just, uh, thank you very much as always for your participation tonight.
Okay.
Thanks, uh, going to move on to Sean De Vries.
Uh, hi, can everybody hear me okay?
We can, you have up to five minutes.
Great. Okay, so basically, I feel quite compelled as a resident of Vancouver to support six oh one Beach Crescent, um, a couple of reasons. One is, I'm a renter and I have trouble finding places, I've been looking to buy, and when you look at downtown, you look at the west side, I don't know how we succeed if we don't build up. And so I know there's a height restriction, but I feel compelled from an environmental perspective, but also personal perspective, that the height will diminish that problem. It'll open up opportunities for people like me, and of course, for social housing. Um, and at a personal level, I felt compelled by the building itself. When I, uh, drive over the bridge with my daughter, she always wants to go by the Vancouver House, because it impresses her so much. And I think that that kind of architecture is bold, it's big and it's exciting for our city, and so I felt compelled to make the call into this meeting just to express my support. for it.
That's great. Well, thank you so much for, uh, calling in and, uh, you don't have any questions, sir? So, uh, again, thank you for participating this evening. Uh, move on to the next speaker. Uh, we have Naomi, uh, Brunemire.
A reminder was sent to Naomi, however, she hasn't called in yet.
Okay, great, thanks very much. Uh, we have, uh, Jan Baer, next speaker, number six.
Jan Baer, your line is open, you can go ahead.
Thanks very much for phoning in. Uh, you have up to five minutes whenever you're ready. Jan Baer? Moderator, have we, uh, got Jan Baer there?
Her line is open, uh, her phone might be on mute on her end, I'm not sure.
Okay, thanks. Um, what I think we'll do, of course, we have a call at the end. If folks missed that queue-
Hello, are you there?
Oh, there's- Oh, yes, hi, this is, uh, Jan Baer, yes, this is the mayor speaking here. If you, uh, you have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Oh, thank you, that was my fault, I did have the mute on, thanks for pointing that out to me.
No problem, it happens to all of us.
Uh, anyways, um, uh, I, I don't have as much to say as the, uh, first three. Um, I re, I'm gonna reiterate a lot of what they say, but anyways, uh, I am a resident of Vancouver and I'm phoning in to support the project at 601 Beach Crescent. Um, the design, I think, is just beautiful and, uh, and it's one thing you're gonna see coming into the city. And, um, I think the integration between the market housing and the social housing is brilliant. Um, I know some people are put off because there's separate doors or the separate, uh, play areas or social areas, but overall, people will meet other people during, in that community. And I think that's important, that people from different walks of life meet each other and, and get to know each other, and especially for the children. And I like that they have, um, a nice play area and barbecue area for the social housing as well, even if it's on a different level, um, because it's important that people live in apartment buildings, especially big high-rises, get to know each other. It's also a safe area, um, for the kids to play and go to. Uh, I did hear some of the comments about not enough schooling, that is a concern. However, I think that will all work out. Um, I think the most important aspect of this building is that it does support 152 social housing units and we are in dire need of them. And people, we have a right to live in a community that they, they feel positive and healthy and I think it's up to us as a society to create these type of communities. Um, so I fully, um, support the project and I hope, um, you and your council feel the same way. So thank you for this time.
Thank you so much for, for calling in. I don't have any questions for you, uh, council hasn't put themselves on the queue, so, well, just thank you for participating today and, uh, and, uh, we'll move to the next speaker. Thank you. Okay, councillor, we have next, um, we have Judith McMillan.
Yes, hello?
Hi there, uh, this is the mayor speaking. And you have up to five minutes. Hi there.
Thank, thank you. So firstly, I'd like to address the fact of social housing. 1550 Granville Street across from 1515 Granville Street, which is at the very end of Granville Street under the bridge, was originally designated as social housing for families and that has been abandoned by the city for some reason. And I would like to see that reinstated. And I, um, opposed to the extension of the height from, I believe it was 17 stories, going up to, I believe, 58, but now I hear it's feet and all that. Uh, and this project was approved originally for 17 floors, as far as I can recall. And this was, would, uh, if it, if it's approved to go up, it makes it taller than Vancouver House. 17 is already too many floors for the area as this area is currently too condensed with populations. I believe that six floors would be more appropriate to give a community atmosphere to our area. In Kitzalano, residents are up in arms if a building goes up over six stories. Why is there such a height restriction along Camby where there's more open spaces? Look to these areas to build. We are losing our views and our sunlight and blue skies. People are depressed enough with the rain in Vancouver. We need all the sun and blue skies we can get. Many seniors live in the area and benefit from sunlight with vitamin D. Within the past two hours, I've collected over 20 signatures to oppose the additional height at 601 Beach. We do not want another major construction project here. As a resident, I've suffered through years of construction of Vancouver House. The residents I represent feel as I do, this is enough. We are heavily contrasted with traffic daily. The numerous construction workers parked at the empty lot at 601 Beach Crescent when building Vancouver House, where will they park their trucks and equipment now? There is no parking. All parking in the area is taken right now by the construction company, equipment and workers. The streets are blocked and traffic delay is 20 minutes to an hour on a daily basis. Traffic comes off of Beach Pacific to go along Beach to avoid the daily jams at Burrard Bridge. Regarding earthquakes and emergencies, in the event of a major disaster, there will be no way to exit this area as we have only two streets to exit from. There is no right turn at Beach and Granville. This street needs to be opened so that residents can get out. If there's an earthquake, a flood, or fire, we're trapped here. Already Vancouver House looms over and if it came crashing down on us, we're all doomed. 601 Beach, if approved, would, um, block our light and also come crashing down if there's an earthquake. It's been advertised as a dancing partner to Vancouver House in the sky. It could be the dance of disaster. Don't kid yourself. If earthquake proofing is not a guarantee, look to Japan. There are no guarantees. We need access in and out of the area, we need parking, and we do not need further building and congestion. I want to see my area as a community, not as a congested concrete jungle. Some of the specialist doctors at St. Paul's were promised a community for their children here. This has not been done, so they are leaving the area to go where their children are given consideration. In closing, I would appreciate the honourable mayor and councillors to vote to keep the height to 601, of 106, of 601 Beach as originally planned to be the original height, which I think may have been 17 stories. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for calling in and participating this evening. Uh, we don't have any, uh, questions from you on the list here from council, so I am going to move to the next speaker, but thank you for participating. Uh, we've got next, we have, uh, Michael Bisker.
Hi, good evening. Um, I'm, uh, speaking in opposition to the rezoning application for 601 Beach Crescent. Uh, I am a resident of Vancouver. I, I know a number of my neighbors will also be speaking tonight against this proposed development and they'll describe to you far better than I can how this project violates a number of the council's own policies and guidelines. Um, but I'm speaking tonight for young families in particular, living in the neighborhood. My wife and I have lived two blocks from the proposed development for the past four years and we are expecting our first child in just a few weeks. And one of the primary reasons why we chose to buy a condo in downtown Vancouver as opposed to potentially a larger space in the suburbs is, um, because we have a vision of raising a family in downtown. And like many young couples, we want our children to grow up, taking advantage of all of the outdoor activities and events that downtown has to offer. And each year, we are seeing more and more young families choosing to live downtown rather than start a family and move away and outside of the area. And this reality has made an already overcrowded school system in our area even worse. Uh, today, our son would have less than a 10% chance of going to Elsie Roy Elementary, which is our neighborhood elementary school. Uh, five years from now, when he's of school age, that percentage will undoubtedly be even worse. The new Coal Harbour School that I noticed and mentioned several times tonight, um, is not going to add any additional capacity to children living in downtown for more than 10 years. And even then, 10 years from now, we all know the capacity issue is obviously going to be much, much worse. Um, not to mention that the Coal Harbour School is not within walking distance of the neighborhood where we live right now. There are simply no walkable schools in the neighborhood, other than Elsie Roy, and there's no plan for capacity at all. Um, I know that many of you agree that Vancouver has a school capacity issue. Um, I've met with a number of you with other residents of our neighborhood prior to the pandemic. Most of you agree that it's a big issue. Uh, I know some of you, uh, may blame the provincial government for their inaction. Uh, some of you might put the blame on the Vancouver School Board, but I would say that for the purposes of this development, it doesn't really matter who is at fault for the lack of school space in downtown Vancouver. What matters is that you, the Vancouver City Council, cannot in good conscience exacerbate an ongoing crisis. And that's exactly what you'd be doing by approving this rezoning application. There are currently, uh, 2,000 housing units in the midst of construction in the three-block radius around my family's home. And while it may be too late for you to do something about those units, you do have an opportunity today to send a message to developers and to school board and provincial officials alike, that you will not be approving any more large-scale rezoning applications in this area until this lack of school space issue is fixed. There are numerous city policies that you are meant to uphold that speak to creating healthy and safe neighborhoods for families, how each child should be within walking distance of an elementary school. This rezoning application is counter to planning guidelines intended to make Falls Creek North an area of livable communities. And frankly, I further believe that approving rezoning applications while we have a school capacity crisis discriminates against downtown families like us. When you approve applications like this, you're telling families living in downtown, "Go live somewhere else." And no one should be discriminated against based on their family status. We have the right to raise our children in downtown, we have a right to live in a city where our representatives ensure that our children can go to school where they live. This is not a luxury or a privilege, it is a right. And I'm asking that you not strip us of this right by approving the rezoning application like 601 Beach Crescent. I strongly urge you to oppose this rezoning application until there's a plan to address the lack of school capacity downtown. Thank you.
Well, thanks so much. Uh, you actually do have a question from, uh, councillor Dejanova. Councillor Dejanova, please, uh, go ahead, up to five minutes for your question.
Thanks very much. Um, thanks for making the time to call in and speak. A lot of, uh, I, I don't know, uh, if, if after, uh, after you have your child, you might have time to do that as well. I find that we don't hear from as many young families sometimes because they, they don't seem to be able to have the time to contact us. But my question for you, um, or at least that's what I hear, uh, my question for you is, is it that you're, you're, I'm hearing from you that you, it's not that you mind density, you've chosen to live in downtown, you've made that choice and sacrifices to go along with it, but looking at the school system, the sustainability and, you know, not just amenities for everyone, but amenities for families, including schools? And I don't really see that as an amenity, I, I see it as, as something that, uh, you know, is, is integral to being able to raise a family in a certain neighborhood. So my question to you is, if you did see more of that, more schools, and, um, for instance, in this case, the City of Vancouver, um, one of the benefits is, is affordable housing, but if it was instead, you know, space for schools or a collaboration with a school, would you be more likely to support this project, um, or other projects like it? And, uh, you don't have to answer my question, but I'm hoping that you might be able to, um, share your insight on that.
So if I understand your question, you're asking me if I would be more willing to support this project if there was a plan to increase capacity for schools in downtown? Is that what you're asking me?
Yes, yeah.
Uh, uh, of course. If there was a plan in place to sub, to, to increase school capacity and that was actually planned, uh, yes, that, that is my main, uh, main problem. Um, but I, I, I'm concerned that the message that's being sent to, um, developers that are like the one that's before you with this rezoning application is that, um, they get to have a say and, and that, uh, we are sort of collateral damage and they're gonna put their, uh, developments and they're gonna apply for the rezoning applications where they like. And then, you know, and to be honest with you, when my wife and I moved into downtown, we were not aware that this was such an issue. We, uh, we, you know, and it's kind of shocking to me and I feel horrible for the parents who have been going through this for the last, seems like 15 years in downtown. And it's as if everyone acts like it's not a crisis and it's clearly a crisis and I cannot understand why, when we have an ongoing crisis and it seems like I've had one for a very long time, um, it would continue to be acting like business as usual with, with applications like this. So I haven't heard of a plan in place-
So I won't talk to you about childcare then? I, I was just gonna ask about childcare, sorry, I have limited time, but, but go ahead and finish your, your comment.
No, and I, and I, I, I haven't heard of there being a plan in place and, 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 you know, and it was very helpful to meet with all of you, you know, prior to the pandemic and, and, and sort of discuss, uh, my concerns along with those of my neighbors. Um, but I think that, I, I think that there needs to be, uh, someone needs to take some responsibility and not pass the buck for the school issue we have downtown. Because it just seems as if there's all kinds of blame that gets thrown around and I'm not here to point fingers at who's it more to blame than, uh, anyone else. What, what I can see is that you have an opportunity when it comes to rezoning applications to make a, make, make, to take a stand about this issue in downtown. That, that's kind of my point.
Okay. Can I ask you, do you feel the same way about childcare? Um, I mean, schools are one thing, but, um, and very important and very separate to childcare, but if we're talking about young families and hate to call it an amenity because it's a requirement for a lot of families to be able to have childcare, do you feel that there needs to be more room for childcare spaces as well?
I, I do agree, but I, I feel like there's almost, it's almost an acceptance now that, um, that childcare is something that is going to be a struggle for everybody. Uh, so I, 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 I'm, I'm almost sort of past believing that that's a possibility and, but I, I think that there should be a plan for there to be school capacity for kids in the area. I mean, that just seems at a bare minimum, there should be that. Um, yes, it would be wonderful if there was also local childcare options, but I'm, I'm just not sure how feasible that is.
Well, we're, we are receiving 152 units of social housing if this does move forward to the City of Vancouver. Would you, would you rather see something else other than 150 units of, of non-market housing? Would you think that some of those other amenities that you mentioned would-
Just 15 seconds.
Better serve the city? Sorry. I don't know.
I, I, I don't know that I could be the person to answer that, but-
Okay, of course. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thanks. At the end of the time and there's no other questions for you, uh, thank you very much for, for calling in today and sharing your views. Uh, we, uh, speaker number nine, Andrea Lawson, has withdrawn. Uh, so speaker number 10 is Daphne Harwood.
That would be me. Can you hear me?
I can, uh, please go ahead up the, yes, I can, go up to five minutes, whenever you're ready, I'll start your timer.
Perfect. Okay. Mr. Mayor and members of city council, my name is Daphne Harwood. I live at 428 Beach Crescent and I'm coming you, coming to you to speak against the Pinnacle project at 601 Crescent, Beach Crescent. I am against the rezoning of this parcel of land. I came to Vancouver in 1967. There were at that time only three, three tall buildings in the city. And in the 53 years, that I've been here, I've seen a lot of changes. Of course, all cities change, but as Jane Jacobs taught us a few years ago, quite a few years ago, we have some, we do have some power and control over what we choose to change. My first association with what is now called the Beach District was in 1985 or '06, when I secured a city-owned building at 1435 Granville Street for a nonprofit organization that I had started. It was called the Imagination Market. Our rent was $1 a year. We collected safe, reusable materials from businesses and industries for art, craft, and play. We sold to all manner of people in the arts, to educators, community centers, parents and kids. We had a presence at several children's festivals. An urban source on Main Street is the direct descendant of that project, which is still in business. In 2009, I bought a condo, which is now, has a full view of Vancouver House from the east side of George Wainborne Park. At that time, I started documenting the neighborhood with my camera and journal. The 1435- The fourteen thirty-five Granville Street building had gone through many phases, and I got to watch the stages of the neighborhood change, especially once the development permit went up for the Vancouver House project in two thousand and thirteen. I have taken nearly twenty-five hundred photos of the Beach District reinventing himself. I even have ones of the Korean gla- glass suppliers choosing the best colors for the glass for Vancouver House and other cladding issues that were mentioned earlier in this meeting. I became fascinated with the coordinated intentions of three entities, the Bjark Ingalls Group, the City of Vancouver, and West Bank, all trying to create a new vibrant neighborhood out of what had clearly become an increasingly dysfunctional one. Okay. I have four reasons for being against this Pinnacle Project. The Vancouver House project is not finished. The area has not yet gelled into the, quote, vibrant neighborhood as hoped for because important elements are still missing. Notably, the University of Canada West, several restaurants, Scotiabank branch, and so on. We, and I include the city and the, uh, the city council and planners in this, we do not know what the impact of Vancouver House project will have on the Beach District's traffic, or parking, or our already existing parks, or the probable need for, we've already mentioned, the new elementary school, or more daycares, or other basic infrastructures beyond fire, police, and ambulance. It seems to me hasty to pile another huge project when the first one hasn't even, i- isn't even done or has been subtle, settled in. And I am absolutely shocked to hear that anybody thinks that Coal Harbour School, um, is being considered to serve the people in our neighborhood. I just think that's absolutely ridiculous. Okay. I have always thought that the concept of having two tall buildings at the north end of our city's major bridges was a silly idea. It's just an idea. It doesn't have to be enacted just because somebody had the idea. In any case, coming, uh, coming north on the Granville Street Bridge, there are already two very eye-catching buildings. One is the Vancouver House, and the other one is the new one at Pacific and Richards with its amazing mural. To me, that's gateway enough. Three, I don't think that our neighborhood needs yet another high-rise. We all know that Vancouver needs to build housing for the missing middle, either subsidized or affordable housing truly affordable.
And just fifteen seconds.
Oh, my gosh.
Just fifteen seconds. I know, it goes fast.
Okay, so then I, okay, I want to talk about losses, losses of sky, losses of, of collective views, losses of light to buildings around, uh, the six oh one parcel, and, uh, and losses of people.
You, you aren't your five minutes, but you do have a question from councillor Frye, so perhaps councillor Frye.
Okay, good. Terrific.
Councillor Frye, go ahead.
Yeah, well, first off, I just, I just want to appreciate your lament for how it used to be down there. I remember the Imagination Market on Powell Street and when you were down there. I also had my own studio back in the day on, uh, Beach, Beach and Hornby. Um, and it's changed a lot down there. I appreciate you acknowledging what's been lost from there. But that being said, time marches on. Um, I'm wondering if you're aware of some of the, the, um, uh, the new art spaces that are going to be coming online in the, in the, in the, uh, that have been a direct result of sort of community amenity contributions from some of those developments?
I, I haven't seen anything beyond the chandelier, which I think is slightly ridiculous. Um, I think, I, I think that what's coming, coming our way is amenities for rich people, and it makes me feel pretty sad because I'm not, you know, uh, uh, the whole premise of this neighborhood, and I live in a very wealthy, um, condo, and, and all the people in this building send their kids to private schools. What the hell's up with that? They don't even, and actually, they don't even, they don't even have the option to send their kids to a public school. Anyway, so, uh, I, I mean, what did you ask me?
Well, I did, I asked you if you were aware that there's a pretty significant sort of arts, uh, space that's coming there that's through, that is funded through, uh, development contributions, and that'll be a nurturing space for art studios and music and creative expression.
Where, where, whereabouts?
Uh, on Pacific, sort of under the bridge and stuff around there. It, it is very much moving along, and I, I can't tell you right off the top of my head. If you shoot me an email though, I'll, I'll send you details about it. But I just wanted to give you a reassurance about that.
And I would, I would love it if they would put, if we go back to the old, the old building and put a school under it. I mean, really.
No, I think.
Now, now we're talking mixed use. I know it's too late, but that's my thought.
No, I, I, I appreciate the.
I mean, I, I realize I came, I came into this very naive, and, uh, and, and that's, you know, because I just, it's really hard to keep up with everything that's happening and all the, wow, I mean, all the, uh, levels of consideration. I'm very, very impressed with, you know, all the different, all the different levels of concern that people have. Judith McMillan, I thought she was amazing. I think I've talked to her before, but anyway, no, I had no idea that there was.
Well, I do want to, I do want to thank you for acknowledging the creative locus that existed under the bridge that many wouldn't, wouldn't remember, but I, I certainly do and, uh, appreciate you evoking that. And, and, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Thank you councillor Frye, uh, and thanks, uh, for calling in today. I've got, um, let's see here. Uh, we have Devon Hasek next, speaker number eleven.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and members of city council. My name is Devon Hasek, and I'm a resident of Vancouver. Though I'm not sure if all of you would agree, as I only bought my home here about a decade ago. Regardless of that, I'm here to speak to you tonight for several reasons, including because of the impact this building will have on my home's view. Admittedly, I didn't realize how much that would change when I first purchased my home, although, for about almost half of what it's worth today. Back then, I didn't know about the higher buildings policy or the gateway buildings in Envision. So you can imagine my surprise as I've watched several cranes go up over these years and the results that followed. Of course, many of these buildings are hidden by trees that block our city's protected view cones or by our uniform skyline of seafoam-colored glass. However, that won't be the case with this building, and that's one of the reasons I'm so happy to support it. I choose to live in a vibrant, bustling, living city, which means I'm in walking distance of jobs, festivals, and normally heartbreaking connect games. In return, I accepted like anything else of the lives. It meant that our city needed the freedom to grow. To be clear, if developers ever start proposing buildings on artificially floating islands, I'll be the first one to complain. But otherwise, I realize my view is subject to change. Of course, I don't think that we should just allow any building in such a prominent location, nor would I want to look at a Soviet-style concrete bunker. After all, we just got rid of the old Freemasons building on West Eight Avenue. We need to ensure quality designs for these landmark locations, and I think this proposal, along with the conditions your staff have imposed, will achieve that. I recognize that this opinion is one of privilege, but it is born of blood, tears, sacrifice, and the efforts of others. If not for that, I wouldn't be here before you tonight, I guess on the phone tonight. I may well be one of those living on the streets. There's sadly been the targets of so much vitriol in these tough times. I know some believe we should only allow for market housing downtown, that the vulnerable should be forced out. But I believe we are a society based on compassion and decency, not one born of Latinum and unloks. I don't have the expertise to know if it was right to sell the city online in two thousand and sixteen, but I do know there are many similar vacant sites that sit empty across our city due to their lack of funding. I hope you will all realize that this isn't the time to score petty political victories over past opponents. That would be the actions of a losing team. Rather, I think you should claim victory as the council that helped deliver a hundred and fifty-two new non-market homes to our city, which will make all residents of all incomes feel far safer. As a person with disability and chronic pain, I know I will feel a lot better once the city revises the area's road network and improves the Granville Street Bridge. I understand I missed that opportunity for discussion yesterday, but I really believe these changes will further unlock this area's emerging potential. We are creating new homes here. But unlike some of the suburbs, our city's policies ensure our city's littleness will only continue to bloom. Thanks to the ability to call in, I can look out my window, and though it's hard to see with the smoke in the air and at this time of day, I can still imagine what that future could look like. I don't see the destruction in my view. Rather, I see it enhanced by a work of art that will honor one of our city's most cherished values, providing housing to support people of a wide range of income. Some will disagree with me, but I lived in the suburbs. I remember my friends taking long school bus rides, far further than just to one side of the downtown peninsula. I can't help but reflect on that, as my spouse and I plan to start a family soon. We're thinking next year. Naturally, because of that, we're both aware of the plan to build a new school at Nelson Park and that the Vancouver School Board has recently requested funding to expand several schools on both sides of Falls Creek. Whether adopted or biological, my children will have the opportunity to walk, bike, and thanks to a recent court ruling, even take transit to many places that my parents and I had to spend hours commuting to. I chose to live in a city, in this city, because I love it. For these reasons, I ask you not to block my view, but to enhance it and this community with the approval of all this application has to offer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for calling in, and I don't see, uh, any questions. So I appreciate you, uh, participating this evening. And next, uh, we have David Hutniak, uh, speaker number twelve.
Uh, good evening, your worship and council. Um, my name is David Hutniak, and I'm the chief executive officer of Landlord VC. I am not a resident of Vancouver. Uh, and I am here on behalf of Landlord VC's thirty-three hundred members, all owners and managers of rental housing, who strongly support this application to build one hundred and fifty-two new safe, secure, and affordable purpose-built rental homes, uh, for our community as part of an exciting new project that will ultimately provide four hundred and fifty-five homes. In our view, with the economic uncertainty facing British Columbians, renting one's home will continue to be an important option for many people. The challenge then becomes ensuring we have adequate supply of safe and healthy rental homes. I've spoken to you at recent public hearings during which I emphasized the need for all levels of government to create an environment that ensures that continued viability of the rental housing industry. As I stated then, and I do so again this evening, this is even more critical now as our sector continues to navigate the current and future impacts of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Please know that the challenges and uncertainties are exponentially greater for anyone contemplating the building of new purpose-built rental housing today. The project before you this evening is an exciting one in that in addition to providing one hundred and fifty-two affordable rental homes, three hundred and three homes for purchase will be built to create what stands to be a diverse community within a single building. We often talk about multi-unit buildings as their own standalone communities. Achieving this diversity within these standalone communities is a challenge. It is great to see the proponent put forward this project, which includes the one hundred and fifty-two affordable rental homes to facilitate that diversity. As you know, uh, this project is guided by the Falls Creek North Development Plan. Uh, the intent of this plan is to achieve a high standard of density and development within a number of residential neighborhoods and commercial areas within Falls Creek North. It is also intended that buildings, open spaces, and land uses be designed and planned to complement and take advantage of the setting on the water in the center of the city. By virtue of this guidance, the proponent had a clear roadmap to follow for the project, and in our view, they've done an impeccable job. What is particularly noteworthy is that this project is advancing the city's own vision to create a gateway to downtown with landmark design. We applaud them. As I mentioned, the project includes one hundred and fifty-two new affordable rental homes. Uh, these homes will be managed by a nonprofit, nonprofit housing provider who will bring their specialized expertise to the table. The city of Vancouver has an urgent need for more affordable housing to accommodate increasing demand, and this project would provide one hundred and fifty-two affordable units through one development. These one hundred and fifty-two affordable housing units represent approximately thirty-three percent of the total number of units in the building. This is far higher than the twenty percent that other projects are required to provide when the city asks, uh, for mixed tenure buildings that include affordable housing. The type of units is also an important consideration when creating new rental housing. Uh, family-oriented units are always highly desirable if possible. The breakdown of housing units in this project includes a healthy mix of family homes. Most notable are the twenty-five three-bedroom and thirty-two-bedroom family homes, or one-third of the total units. I should also note that there are also eight accessible one-bedrooms. It would be great to see many large family, larger family-oriented homes coming on stream in the community. This project offers that opportunity. A robust supply of rental housing is critical to overall community health and well-being, is an important contributor to, contributor to dynamic local economies. Over half of all households in the city of Vancouver are renters, and while progress is being made to incrementally increase the supply of secure, purpose-built rental housing in the community, we all know that there's still much work to be done. This project will not only increase rental supply, but importantly, augment the supply of more affordable units. That's a great win for renters. There will no doubt be members of the community who will oppose this project. I, however, argue that they are not truly representative of the broader community, and I would further argue that they are a vocal minority with their own self-interests. I know that I don't need to remind you that your focus needs to be on the broader community. In closing, on behalf of Landlord VC, I urge you to, you all to say yes to this application, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for, uh, phoning in. I don't see, uh, any questions for you, so I will move on to the next speaker. Uh, we have David Brook, number thirteen.
Hello.
Hi there.
Thank you, thank, thank you for your time this evening. I'm speaking against the rezoning application for six oh one Beach. My name is David Brook. I'm a resident of fourteen ninety-five Richards, just east of the proposed development. I'm a retired Vancouver School Board elementary principal, and I worked with the VSB for forty-two years. Twelve of those years, I was principal of Livingston Elementary at Twenty-third and Sophia, basically Twenty-Third and Main. It was during that time that Elsie Roy Elementary maxed out their capacity, and students in the catchment were forced to attend other schools. Over my time at Livingston, we regularly took ten to fifteen students each year from Elsie Roy. I need to impress upon you the negative impact that had on those families. Livingston is five kilometers from Elsie Roy, but at the time, the closest school was Space, and we are not on any direct bus route. Although a few families had the time and resources to drive their children to and from school, many did not. Nearly all were working parents, and many were single working mothers or fathers. It's hard to really appreciate the distress this caused these parents trying to get their children to and from school, trying to make a two-bus connection to the school and then back in order to get to work on time. They then had to repeat the process at three PM, all the while paying all transportation costs themselves. The school board pays nothing. For some of it, it was impossible, and they had to move away. My biggest concern I would like to address is the type of community that has already been created, a near-childless downtown core. Within a kilometer or less of six oh one Beach, there are approximately two thousand using, units presently under construction or recently completed. This does not even include the two towers planned for the Granville Bridge, on-off loops. When I spoke to the head of planning at the VSB last year, I asked how all the children from these towers were going to be accommodated. His answer shocked me. He said his data indicates a yield rate of only one percent. That means that of approximately thirty-five to four thousand residents, only one percent can be expected to attend a Vancouver public school. This can only mean one of two things. Either many, if not most, parents are having to choose a private school, which Michael already referred to earlier on, or they're being forced out of the community. The real problem in this community is a serious miscalculation or inadequate planning that was and continues to be made for schools. I will, uh, if, I'll be open for questions on the Coal Harbour and Nelson Park, because I discussed that with them as well at the end, if you would like. I've got other insights. The planners misjudged the number of parents who wanted to stay in the downtown core and to raise their families coast to work and not own a car. In other districts, they still have room to build schools. In this there, there is no public land available in the catchment area. According to the head of planning, the only solution he had been pondering, just as an idea, was whether they could integrate a school in any future seismic upgrading of the Vancouver Aquatic. the Vancouver Aquatic Centre. That would mean coordinating with the park board. This, of course, is a real long shot in both feasibility and timeframe. If you walk on the seawall on a nice day, you see many people pushing strollers. There are lots of preschool children in the area. If you talk to them, parents, they nearly all plan to stay in the area for school. Little do they know they have less than a 50th chance of attending a local school. If you read real estate sales brochure, they nearly always state walking distance to Elsie Roy School. They don't tell them that in most years, up to about 80 in-catchment students apply for the 40 kindergarten spots, deceptive at best. So the area surrounding Droidey Rayborn Park was clearly planned as a family community. The streets are curved and narrow, reasonable parking for visitors, and not designed for lots of traffic, especially for commercial trucks.
And just 15 seconds.
I understand. Yep. I think you have a whole new city plan in the works. I would suggest that you wait and get the issues related to livability there. So I would just ask you to reconsider and put this on hold until you get a proper plan for schools. Thank you.
Thanks very much. You do have questions, though? Counselor Hardwick, up to you, five minutes.
Yes, thank you very much. You mentioned that you had some additional insights on Coal Harbour.
Well, first of all...
Would you care to elaborate?
Yeah. Well, as was mentioned, Coal Harbour is at a development stage. It hasn't been started to being built. And so the idea when I talked to planning was Coal Harbour will be built. There aren't a lot of people down there at the moment who would go there, so when they redevelop Nelson Park and put the... What they're doing is BC Hydro is building a substation underneath, and then they're tearing down the Henderson or Roberts Annex, and they expect those kids to go to Coal Harbour while they build a new one. And eventually, you have to recognize that Nelson Park, which is Roberts Annex, is very close to the new or St. Paul's Hospital project. So there's not going to be any particularly easy way for any of these students to get, first of all, to Coal Harbour. You have to cross busy streets to get there. Nelson Park, again, you have to cross Burrard. These aren't really walkable in a city like this. So unless you build... And you've got these 2,000 units that are being presently built, and you have to get some kind of plan going for those, or you're going to just end up with a childless downtown, which is really disappointing because that's not what it was designed for. So those schools, I don't see are an option, and you really have to look. Maybe you should be using 601 Beach to build a school, although it's probably not big enough.
Thank you very much.
Answer your question?
It does. I appreciate it very much. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Counselor Hardwick. Thanks for calling in this evening. I very much appreciate your inputs. The next speaker we have is Susan Abs, and I believe, Susan Abs, you're speaking on behalf of two other people. And you have a presentation. Susan Abs?
Hello?
Hi, Susan Abs.
I'm on the phone. Hi.
Hi there. I understand you're speaking on behalf of two other people.
Yes, I am.
And are they also on the list? I just wanted to make sure as I kind of go here.
The names were sent to the city clerk. The initial... We had quite a bit of back and forth to sort this out. She said that they should be present, and I said, "Well, they can't be present because of COVID."
Yeah.
She said, "Right." So they sent notes saying that I could represent them.
Okay. And could you just let me know what their names are?
Oh, yeah, I wrote down here. I've got all three of them here. Patsy Lacroy and Candice Smith.
Okay.
And also Alicia Fazekas.
Okay. And I just wanted to make sure they're not on the list, because... And if you're speaking with them, for them, you have up to eight minutes, I believe. And that's great. So whenever you're ready... And I know you have a presentation, so I'll just check with the clerk. Is the presentation ready to go, clerks?
Mayor Stewart, this is the clerk, and yes, it is up on the screen.
Great. Thanks very much. Please go ahead, Susan Abs.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so my name is Susan Abs, and I'm a resident of Fairview, South Granville specifically. And I've lived in this area for 10 years, and before that, I was 25 years in Kitsellano. I have been working closely with the Beach District Neighborhood Committee under the banner of LiveAbilityFirst.ca, so I'm also representing a subcommittee of that group that looked at policy issues surrounding this proposal, because there's a lot of policy involved, because it's coming in under the Higher Buildings Policy. So I met up with that group at the Open House a couple of years ago, and we've been working for the last two years. I just want to mention that don't judge the degree of interest in this by the number of people that have signed up, because we've been suffering from the pandemic, of course. We had a campaign planned to educate the public, let people know more about this proposal, get them engaged, and just as we were launching, the pandemic hit. So I think this is an underrepresentation of the interest you would have if we had gone ahead with our information and education campaign, which we've been planning for two years. But anyway, so we are just the tip of the iceberg, is what I'm saying, because we've talked... We have many other people, hundreds of people interested and involved. Why am I involved? I live in South Granville, and all of a sudden, a few years ago, I started seeing Vancouver House grow, and then grew and grew and grew. And suddenly, it seemed to be in every single view that I had from Fairview, cycling over the bridge, cycling along the 10th Avenue bikeway, and everything. I am, by background, an urban planner and a public engagement specialist. And everything I'd ever learned, it just seemed amazing to me that something of that scale and height enmascing on that location, it just seemed contrary to everything I'd ever heard of in planning, and also, I just wondered why we hadn't heard more about it. So investigating that led me to finding out about the Higher Buildings Policy and then the current proposal. So I'd like to... I have four points that I'd like to make. First of all, I'd like... I am against the proposal, and I'm saying we, as the group that I'm representing, urge council to turn down the rezoning, retain the current zoning for 17-story until new options for the site are identified that are more livable for the residents, and more importantly, or as importantly, the visitors that live, work, and recreate around this iconic urban shoreline. We know that that area is a center for activities for Vancouverites. Why? Higher Buildings Policy is the area I'll focus on most, and then a couple of other things. The Higher Building... My date's wrong here. The Higher Building Policy, which I have in front of me, was passed in 1997, and I could be corrected here, but it was amended in February 2011 in response to a staff report called the Urban Structure Report, and the title was "Implementation of Vancouver Views and Opportunities for Higher Buildings." What happened in the 2011 version is that the designation of spots for higher buildings, the initial ones were in the center, in the Central Business District, CBD, as we geographers call it. And what happened in 2011 was those so-called gateway dots appeared around on Burrard, Cambe, and Granville Bridge. And at that time, there was not a lot of extensive public involvement. I have the list here. I won't go through the details, but I will point out that in the little survey they did, that only half the people who filled surveys agreed with gateways at the Granville Bridge. And at that time, the report says that the buildings of 50 to 700 feet should be in the CBD, Central Business District, and that buildings of 425 would be allowed at the gateways. So you see where I'm going here. That's not what's ended up happening. I feel that this policy is immensely out of date. It's 20 years. You could pass it under this policy, but given that the policy's 20 years old and hasn't kept up with all the developments in the downtown and what's gone on and the issues that people are talking about, I think that it's not a good call to go ahead with approving it under this, and especially given the very minimal input that public had on those so-called gateway sites. The people I've been talking to, I'm just going through my points here. We feel that a gateway at the bridgehead buildings in a city like Vancouver, which really is the setting... I know it's a big urban center, but the setting is what makes it unique. And to think that we have to have two luxury high-rises or a combination luxury and social... Two high-rises, let's say, especially high-rise, to frame somehow the entrance to the downtown just does not seem necessary or in keeping with our setting, because our gateways are really the mountains. That's our connection with our watershed, with all the amenities, the natural amenities that feed the city. So it's already been pointed out that the proposals for 55 stories, it was supposed to be 425. You are not obliged to approve the rezoning just because the dot was put on the site in 2011. It's a guidance document. So we urge you to do a 20-year review of the policy with credible widespread consultation before any more spot rezonings occur. And I'll see if there's anything else I wanted to say under here. Yeah, I mean, I won't even get into the controversy around Vancouver House, but I think it's pretty clear that, yes, there were different views about it, but to the average person that walks across the bridge and hangs out in that area, the work we were starting to do and making people aware said, "Great building, but not the right location." And that's pretty much the message that we have about this building. So I'm going to go to my next point. City planning context. Neither the proposal nor the review by staff or the discussion have looked at impacts or interactions with other really significant initiatives in the area. And I've listed them here. We know about the connector. The Granville Loops development is going to allow for at least two 33-story buildings right exactly adjacent to these two buildings. Then there are the bike lanes that are going through those areas. And then, looking at my perspective, being from Falls Creek and Fairview, what about the whole Falls Creek self-redevelopment? They're going to be looking across at these buildings. And in the rendering, the renderings are always showing from slightly above the bridge or from somewhere else, far away. It's not how people see them. When you're at ground level, whether you're cycling, walking, or a motorist, these buildings are enormous, and they're massive. And when I cycle across the Granville Bridge, which I do, even without a special lane, I just can't... The enassing and the way that it blocks the views as you enter and look past the downtown is quite significant. So I don't like the idea. We don't like the idea of this, and this so-called Granville Gateway Neighbourhood is going to have a lot more development, and this has not been considered. Just looking at the neighborhood itself, Beach, the building is counter to many of the planning guidelines, and we've given you a four-page and a one-page summary that you can look at if this goes to a second night, and many of you have it already.
Just 30 seconds.
Okay. It goes against the guidelines I've listed here. It doesn't conform with the Beach guidelines, and there's been too much development too quickly in this area. Finally, extending my point, other neighborhoods were not considered and need to be considered. And finally, this is what I was trying to point out. These are the views that we get now everywhere we go in Fairview and the Broadway area. Some of these photos are taken from buildings along Broadway, and when you look down, all you see is this eyesore, this giant, many people have said, sort of a sore thumb, directly in the center of any view from this area. So I just think the building... I don't have anything to say about the building. It's the location, the sighting. If it were downtown in the CBD, I'd have a completely different point of view about it.
Thanks so much.
As a planner, it has to do with the sighting.
Thanks very much. You're at eight and a half minutes, but Counselor Hardwick does have questions for you?
Oh, sorry.
Counselor Hardwick? That's okay. Go ahead, Counselor Hardwick.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that that presentation was available to council that we just saw. Has that been emailed to us?
I believe so, Counselor Hardwick. I did receive a copy. Clerks, has it been sent around to...
Mayor Stewart, this is the clerk here. Yes, it was circulated to council, and because this is a semi-judicial meeting, it's also been posted on the website.
Great.
Terrific. Terrific. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, and thank you so much for...
May I say something? I sent it ahead of time, too.
Okay.
I sent... Oh, go ahead. Sorry. That's my alarm.
Okay. No, go ahead. That's fine. So we do have copies, and public also have copies of this.
Yeah, and I also sent... I sent all this text. It's in a four-page summary, which I submitted a day ago.
Okay. That's great.
So it's identical text to the four-page submission that I submitted on behalf of the LiveAbilityFirst and myself.
Okay. Thanks so much. Anything else, Counselor Hardwick? Or is that... Okay. Okay, that's good. Thanks very much. And I believe we have the next speakers online, which is Rebecca Hartley.
Hi. Yep, I'm here.
Hi there. You have up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Rebecca Hartley. I'm a resident of Vancouver, and the reason I'm here is to note my support for the proposal at 601 Beach Crescent. As someone who grew up out east and is lucky enough to be able to live along Falls Creek, I love to gaze at Vancouver skyline. At night, I look upon the lights of the Cambe Bridgehead and that of the Teles Building. In the day, I'm graced by the splash of vibrant colors of the Charleston, and the style of Vancouver House is beyond words. We're graced with beauty, both natural and man-made, and I believe this proposal's delicate form and wave-like appearance will be a welcome addition to it. That said, I'm a Vancouverite, so in addition to always complaining about the weather, I know this proposal needs to do more than just be a pretty face in the room. I know some stereotype Yale Town at the neighborhood of yuppies, but there's a strong condition of affordable housing here. Unfortunately, so much of it just hasn't been built yet. So all this building will offer 303 strata homes, which I'm sure will be eagerly purchased by various professionals and retirees. I'm more happy to see the creation of so many new non-market homes. After all, our neighbors are not just the people that currently share a property line with us, but are also the people we walk past on the street, and those roles can change with just one unexpected event. I don't think most people will care what door they enter their homes from, so long as they're treated with the same level of respect. After all, it's far better to be separated by only a block or two than it is for people to be sent hours down the road. I don't mind driving, but I don't like to commute, which is why I chose to live somewhere with so many great services in close proximity. I may be too young to remember the old days when this area experienced industrial decline or to recall Expo 86. However, I am grateful that I get to see it today, and can only imagine what it will be like tomorrow. I know I appreciate having a short walk to the grocery stores, and I'm sure others appreciate the New London Drug and Fresh Market too, Fresh Street Market too. That doesn't mean we shouldn't preserve the community's important spaces, though. And even though there's plenty of large parks nearby, I appreciate that the small oases that is made in Lauren Brown Park will remain well-lit. Of course, I think this revised design has done a lot to respect the community and its neighbors, too. For these reasons, it has earned my approval, and I hope it will win yours as well. Thank you.
Thanks so much for calling in. Thanks so much for calling in, and I don't see any questions for you, so we're going to move on to the next speaker. We have Oliver South, speaker number 16. Oliver South?
Hello?
Hi there. You've got up to five minutes. Please go ahead whenever you're ready.
Great. Thank you. Hello, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm a resident of Vancouver, and I'm speaking in support of this proposal. There's a lot of things I could say in support of this, from the fact that it provides housing and perhaps the most walkable neighborhood in our city, or that it has zero displacement of existing residents, or how it helps meet our climate goals. However, other speakers have or will touch on these aspects, so I want to focus on one in particular, which is the social housing component. As we all know, we have a desperate need for more of all types of housing in Vancouver, but especially social housing. Unfortunately, senior levels of government are reluctant to provide the money for the large-scale bill that we need. So we need to be leveraging every opportunity we have to build social housing through other means, like developments like these. Some speakers and councillors, I'm sure, will point out problems with this project, and I'm sure there are. But we live in an imperfect world where we can't get everything we want, and we have to accept some compromises. Despite its issues on balance, this product is still a massive net positive. There will be 152 homes built or free for 152 families below or hovering around the poverty line. This product is certainly not perfect, but given the distinct lack of alternative viable options we have, this is what we have to do. That leads me to a point that I really want to make sure is heard. If you vote against social housing with no viable alternatives, then all you're doing is voting against social housing. If there were some other mechanism through which we could build hundreds of units of social housing at no cost to the city that, for whatever reason, we weren't leveraging to the fullest already, then that would be another discussion, but we don't. So I'll say it again. If you vote against social housing with no viable alternatives, then all you're doing is voting against social housing. So I'll say it again. If you vote against social housing with no viable alternatives, then all you're doing is voting against social housing. Some detractors of this product are saying that the site was originally slated for a hundred percent social housing, so therefore it should stay that way. Missing from that, however, is the fact that there was never actually any funding to build that housing. So it's extremely unlikely that it would have been built. And the city can designate land for social housing all it wants, but without, without the funding, we'll never actually see it built. This product provides the funding, and ultimately, it gets it built. I think it's also important to note that delaying or referring developments for more consultation has almost the same effect. The people who need this, this most can't afford to wait a year. If a family is suffering due to paying half their income towards housing, they need the housing now. If buildings like these take an extra year, they just move somewhere else, and we're worse off for it. We know we desperately need social housing, so we need to build this now. And for anyone who doubts we need social housing, I'll propose a very easy check to see if we have enough social housing. One can simply go to the social housing waitlist, and if that number is any number greater than zero, then we need more social housing. I sincerely hope that council approves this proposal. Thank you for your time.
Point of privilege, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks so much, councillor Dejanova. And then councillor Fry has a question for the speaker. Go ahead, councillor Dejanova.
I was hoping you could please add me to the list. Thank you.
Okay, I will. I have councillor Fry on first, though. Councillor Fry, please go ahead and, up to five minutes for the speaker.
Sure. And thank you, speaker, for showing up to speak in, in, in support and defense of social housing. I'm wondering how you define social housing?
Um, well, officially, I mean, it means anything, any housing owned by a nonprofit, so it's not a developer, right? And I'm sure there's different levels of affordability. And I think, I believe the city targets thirty percent hills. So obviously, not every single unit, I think, I guess, would be hills limits. But it would still be a net positive because those other units are needed to make the hills ones viable, right?
Um, okay. Not necessarily if they're turnkey, but, um, and you referenced the, uh, uh, social housing waitlist.
Mm-hmm.
Talking about BC Housing?
Yeah, I think BC Housing has a waitlist where you can apply for all sorts of housing. I mean, I have never applied personally, obviously. But, um, there's a waitlist. I'm, I've heard-
Okay. So, but just to be clear, you don't, you don't necessarily equate all social housing as necessarily hills or affordable housing? Just not, not developer-owned?
Yeah, and that's what I think this is, right? That the city can lease it out to some nonprofit operator, I believe. Is that right?
Uh, essentially, but I'm just curious about the affordability matrix for you. That's, that's great. I think you've answered it. Thank you.
Thanks. Councillor Dejanova, I'll suppose questions for you to call or, please go ahead, councillor Dejanova.
Thanks so much. You had noted in your presentation, I don't want to misquote you, but this is what my question is about. You had said that voting against this was voting against social housing. And if we were voting against social housing with no other viable option, why would we vote against it? Is that correct?
Um, essentially, yeah. Yeah. If, if you don't have another, if someone who votes against it doesn't have an alternative option to provide it at the same cost, which is zero in this case, then the effect is that it doesn't get built.
Well, do you think that there's a possibility? So, sort of the questions, I'm not sure if you were listening to the questions that the council members were asking staff earlier. I was asking questions about, for instance, we've seen partnerships where, you know, applicants will partner with BC Housing. And construction financing could have meant a couple more units, possibly, you know, because it brings the costs down. So in fact, if we were looking for more social housing, or as, you know, or as, as we heard from real estate and facility management on this, you know, this, this is about our rezoning. So if it was just like we were looking at this differently, like perhaps it was units off-site somewhere else in downtown that were offered as the amenity, but there were more of them and more affordable, to councillor Fry's question, would you see that as a viable option?
Um, yeah, certainly. But I mean, the way I see it, this, this city gets these units for free, and that funding can be used to provide other social housing somewhere else as well. And so overall, we would have, you know, I don't know those numbers, but it would be say three hundred instead of a hundred and fifty now because we have this and somewhere else. Like, that funding is, like, we, we need much more than that funding can provide, I think.
But if you took this social housing and put it somewhere different, I'm not saying that you don't have a project here. I'm not saying it's not the same height, but you actually get more social housing, would you, would you think that would be more viable? And you don't have to answer my question.
Um, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I don't know the finances specifically. I mean, I, I assume that you could build social housing for cheaper than what this tower might be. So in that case, there might be some, you might be able to get slightly more, for instance, if these ones are more expensive per unit. But I, I, yeah, I, I mean, I guess it's tricky.
That's what I was asking. Thanks so much for answering my question. Oh, sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off. Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that, that, that's what I have to say, essentially, yeah.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming and presenting to us tonight.
Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Dejanova, and thank you very much for calling in. That's it for questions for you today. And we are now moving on to Ross Lamb, speaker number seventeen. And council, I think, Mr. Lamb has distributed a petition that the clerk has resent to you. Mr. Lamb?
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Stewart. And, yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. You have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Stewart and city councillors. My name is Ross Lamb, and I'm opposed to rezoning applications for six oh one Beach Crescent for a variety of reasons. These include the rapid densification that has taken place over the past, past few years in our neighborhood, resulting in the lack of school spaces for our kids. I'm also opposed because of the segregation between the social housing residents in this proposal from those who will live in the luxury condos above them. However, since I only have a limited amount of time to speak, I would lo, I would like to focus you on the lack of transparency and, and consultation that has resulted in the Granville Gateway propositions. The idea of two super tall buildings in the mouth of the Granville Street Bridge was developed by the previous Vision Vancouver-dominated council. The adoption of these two Granville Gateway buildings were hidden by including them in an amendment in two thousand and eleven to the higher buildings policy, which was adopted in nineteen ninety-seven. Prior to this amendment, there were no open houses in our neighborhood, or even postcards sent to the immediate neighbors notifying us of this proposed change, which would drastically alter our community. I consider myself to be very well-informed of what is happening in my neighborhood, but I had no idea that this was happening until it was slipped under my nose and too late. Two years later, in two thousand and thirteen, West Bank Developments, which is well-known for its close ties to the previous mayor, Gregor Robertson, and the Vision Vancouver political party-
Speaker, I'm just going to, again, just, just to caution you not to impugn any reputations of, of folks and just kind of stick to the merits or demerits of the project. Thanks.
Sure. Okay. Yeah. Thank you. The Vancouver House development was marketed to wealthy investors with showrooms in China, Hong Kong, and Singapore. The previous council was known for imposing their designs on Vancouver without public consultation. And most of you had campaigned on doing things differently. So here's your chance to right this wrong and send a message to the citizens of our city that you're representing us and not working for influential developers who want to build luxury condos to be marketed to overseas buyers. I urge you to vote against the rezoning of this property and retain the current zoning of seventeen stories of social housing. If the developer exercises their option to sell the land back to the city, please take it back and assign it to the Vancouver School Board to construct a much-needed elementary school with social housing above. This is the only parcel of land left in our neighborhood, which is large enough to properly fit a new school. I hope you will consider the long-term ramifications of losing this irreplaceable piece of city-owned land to a developer that wants to build luxury condos in exchange for ten point eight nine percent of the entire building allocated for social housing located in the most unsalable parts of the complex. Thank you for your attention.
Thanks so much for your participation tonight. And there is, I have no questions for you, so we're going to, sorry, move on to the next speaker. Thank you so much. And, so, we have Mohammed Chitzaz.
He actually called in, but he, he dropped, so he's not in at the moment.
Okay. And we're almost near the end of the list. That's speaker number eighteen. I will make a call shortly for anybody else that wants to come in and speak. Next, we have John Provost, speaker number nineteen.
Yeah, I'm here.
Great. Okay. Thanks so much. Please go ahead. Up to-
Hi. Good evening, folks. Yeah. Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to speak tonight. I am a Vancouver resident, and I'm opposed to the project. I sort of just made some notes while we were going through this process this evening and appreciated all the comments. I turned on the TV last Monday morning to catch the eight o'clock global news, and the first thing that came up was a picture of our city with the tagline underneath saying, "Mayor wants more middle-income housing." So I thought to myself, more middle-income housing, what exactly is that? I guess it's a million-dollar question, you know, or even for social housing, for that matter. I'm kind of confused. I think they sort of blend together. So, and I, I don't want to slag the, the applicant, but I just want to say that I, I think it's, it's disingenuous for the applicant to, not to be able to estimate what the price of these condos will be. I mean, you're working out a budget. You should have a range. So I was a bit put off by the fact that he didn't say it was, you know, between three million and ten million or whatever. But anyways, I just want to get that out of the way. So let me just paint a picture. So you work in the city. You're part of the middle class of social housing. And if we draw like a hundred to eight hundred meter circle around six oh one Beach, we've got a lot of completed projects. I don't think they can be considered middle-class or social housing, you know, in any aspect. The most recent, for example, is luxury projects such as the Maddox with two hundred and fourteen units. You've got the Rolston with a hundred and eighty-seven. You've got the Mark with three hundred and two. You've got Peter Wall with three hundred. The Charleston with two sixty-nine. And most recently, the nearly hundred percent completed luxury high-end four hundred and seven-unit Vancouver House. That certainly can't be considered middle-class or social housing. But if you're interested in Vancouver House ownership, also known, I think, somebody mentioned as the sore thumb, because you could see it from everywhere and have, you know, between a million plus to nine million lying around. I'm sure then an agent will quickly write you up and take your money and have the title transferred into your name. But if there wasn't any inventory in Vancouver House, you could go to paper on other projects under construction within a short walk of six oh one Beach, like the Pacific, which has got three hundred and fourteen units, thirty-nine stories, and pre-sales for a much more affordable one million to three point eight seven five. Or maybe even the Smyth, that's got ninety-four units and are selling from two point nine eight eight nine to five point four eight eight nine. You've got the Mirabelle at thirteen forty-five Davies, got a hundred and fifty-three units selling for one point nine to seven point one. You've got Eight Times or Eight X in the Park, a hundred and ninety-one units starting at three point nine to over five million. Thirteen Thirty-Five Howe, a hundred and twenty units starting at over one million to four million. And the Butterfly, which sounds nice, three hundred and thirty-one units, starting at three point nine. Or maybe-
So, speaker, can I, can I, can I steer you back to this project specifically?
Sure. I'm, I'm there. Or maybe you could buy a pre-sale at six oh one Beach. So I'm in the mayor's corner for the more middle-class housing, especially in light of the fact that builders and high-end luxury developers have sort of had their way for the last several years, pretty much doing whatever they want. I think in the past, it was sort of like the Easy Credit commercials, where, you know, whatever you wanted approved. But I think it's time to say no. The mayor and council does have, rather does not have to feel obligated to approve this project. I think six oh one Beach must be a truly affordable site and provide livable housing for residents without depending on another high luxury condo with separate instances of social housing or middle-income housing. I applaud the mayor's proposed middle-income housing program, which is online, which would make ownership possible for households, making eighty thousand dollars per year. And there's also a component in there that, you, you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, that, you know, there will be certain requirements and restrictions related to the height of any new builds, the retention of trees, the preservation of rental units and homes with heritage designation. So piggybacking on-
If I could steer you back to this one?
Yeah.
If I could steer you back to this one, that'd be great.
Okay. So piggybacking on your proposal to the condo market, six oh one Beach was given to the city by Concord, as we've heard many times this evening. It was sold, supposed to be seventeen stories. Now it's morphed into fifty-five. We all know that now. But, you know, people choosing to live in this area do truly need affordable housing. So I think that this tower and a number of others approved by the city in the past fifteen years was a clear violation of the Bridgehead Guidelines, I think that one of the speakers spoke about, which are intended to protect views for people approaching bridges. There are no current affordable housing options. I completely understand the checks and balances issue with these buildings provided with a tremendous amount of tax revenue. But it comes a point in time where we have to do the right thing and the right things to propose a project. So I believe that we have to manage growth, not promote it. And my interpretation that the sale of six oh one Beach is subject to the rezoning application. I, I think I got a, a whiff of that. So, you know, this application is being, is going to be approved. Then I'd ask the city to cancel the application and revert to a larger version of their original plan of the seventeen-story building. And one last quick point I want to talk about is congestion.
We're, we're actually, we're at five and a half minutes, so I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to stop you there. That's fine. Thanks for having me, sir.
Thanks for taking the time. And, yeah, let's, let's not, let's not wait till the furniture's delivered before trying to cancel this application. Let's do it now.
Thank you, sir, for, for calling in. Appreciate it. And we're on to Stuart D., speaker number twenty.
Hi.
Hello. Up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart and councillors. Thanks for the opportunity for adding our comments. I'm not much of a public speaker, so I'll be mostly reading from my written comments. Before I start, I just want to quote from a paper on natural light and the urban environment. It says, "Natural light is one of the most important amenities to ensure a vital, dynamic, and inhabitable city." So I'd like to add my strong opposition to the project for his, for the proposal for rezoning for six oh one Beach. Council to reject the proposal. This neighborhood, from the very beginning and through succeeding master plans, was intended to be a quiet residential area, not a commercial one. This planned development, obviously, is not well-thought-out. The Liveability First Group and others have clearly detailed how the project will destroy the livability and quality of life in the neighborhood. It violates the master plan, and it destroys the public's trust in the city's urban planners. I'd like to add something that's not much discussed, but is really being given more importance in urban planning with respect to quality of life. The project proposes a very tall building, extremely close to the three other buildings that are spaced apart and laid out well to prevent adverse shadow impact on each other. I went to the site, and if you physically stand in front of the, the street and imagine this building coming up, I think about thirty feet away from the nearest building, you, you, it, it's just such a horrible feeling. It's like you're in Hong Kong with these buildings side by side and, and blocking all the light to the next building. So I think Two Park West has that. So everyone values views and viewing corridors, but a good view could add thousands of dollars to a unit's value. But hardly anyone considers the importance of shadow impact and direct sunlight access in terms of health and the quality of life actually even more important. From vitamin D production to minimizing seasonal affective disorder, direct sun is extremely important to the physical and mental health of the residents. So I suffer from seasonal affective disorders. It's called SAD for short, sad. It's triggered by a lack of sunlight, including the months with less light, like during the wintertime. The most common symptoms include depression, extended sleep hours, loss of energy, concentration, motivation, and ability to work. It creates feelings of sadness and hopelessness. It creates feelings of sadness and hopelessness. About ten percent of the population is afflicted, and another twenty percent have a milder form. Maybe some of you are familiar with this. Anyway, like normal depression, it's a bit hard to imagine the suffering unless one experiences it. So, the worst-case scenario, the worst cases lead to suicide sometimes. It's such a severe effect that I often have to schedule my shoots outside the country during the winter months just to function normally. So, to minimize this lack of light, I had to find a unit with glass walls and the south and southwest exposure and a balcony. With these requirements and my modest budget, it took me over a year to find a suitable unit to live in, and had to wait a couple more years for it to be completed. I studied the plans and the models showing the entire neighborhood and chose a building in a height that will guarantee me direct sunlight as much as possible till sundown, taking into consideration all future buildings around it. The plan and model both clearly showed that the maximum height of the building that can be built in the empty lot in front was seventeen stories. So, this proposed skyscraper is completely out of place in this neighborhood. Height is clearly in violation of the Bridgehead guidelines. The policy for higher buildings was intended for the central business district in the downtown core. Other people have mentioned, it looks like a sore thumb sticking out in the middle of nowhere and blocks the view-
Just fifteen seconds.
Anyway, the town, anyway, as the building, higher building states, the policy for careful consideration should be given to minimize adverse shadowing and view impacts in public realm, including key streets, parks, plazas, as well as neighboring buildings.
Thanks so much for your, your-
To please consider all the adverse effects, and if they could seriously study the adverse, adverse effects and reject this proposal and keep it the seventeen-story.
Thank you very much for your time this evening. I don't see any speakers for you, sir, so we're gonna move on to the next speaker, who is Nicholas Schmidt.
Good evening. My name is Nicholas Schmidt. I'm opposed to the rezoning application, and I am a resident of Vancouver. I sent comments and some details a few days ago. They are in file called Appendix D, I believe. And rather than reading this material, let me briefly indicate that your decision creates and assigns rents as well as have impact with respect to the status quo. And the status quo is a lot zone for a maximum height of seventeen stories, and with social housing, as you know. And this lot is one of four lots in the immediate area that was donated to the city by Concord Pacific. And among the three stakeholders, the developer, the city, the community, my view is that the developer is getting very large rents from this rezoning. The city is getting less than what the lot is, seems to be zoned for, and the community, the community is getting the cost and the impact of this massive project. Let me tell you a little bit how I reached this conclusion. Given the square footage of the condo part and the social housing part, it is not very difficult to calculate the construction costs. It is not also, it is not very difficult to calculate the expected sale proceeds, and if, if the developer does not have a sales price, I have a sales price, on average at least, for the condo part, and allowing me to calculate what would be the expected sales proceed, at least, at today's price. And that also allow me to calculate the investment that the developer is making to build the social housing from the city. And when I compute all this and calculate the net rent or benefit or profit, if you will believe, of this, of this proposal, I get over four hundred million dollars in terms of rental or profit. And based on the construction cost, the investment made by the developer with respect to the social unit is, looks to me more closer to forty-four million than the sixty-six million that I could find in the report. Sixty-six million, that is very hard to understand exactly what it's based on. And the construction cost is really the adequate measure here of investment, because this is actually what the developer will, will spend in order to construct or to build the social, the social units. And interestingly, the city is also getting twelve point one million from the developer for not giving to the city what the current zoning seems to be allowing for. This is because the social housing represents in this project a hundred twenty-nine thousand square feet, when my understanding of the current zoning allows for about a hundred ninety thousand square feet of housing, and so about fifty percent more. So, the city is getting less in terms of housing that it can have from this lot, and is getting twelve point one million in cash worth. I would suggest this is not a very good deal for the city and a great deal for the developer, because it says that the developer can sell at condo price units that could have been devoted to rental social, or social housing, or whatever term you would like to use for this part of the project. And the real loser in all this is the community. The Falls Creek North Development Plan has something a lot smaller, as you all know, for this lot, but yet it seems with more social housing, and something that integrates well in the neighborhood, given the street, given the other building location, given the park, given the access, the smallness of the street is important here, given a difficult lot to deal with. And I would suggest that livability should come first, not a gateway. Other people have detailed some of the impact of adding a massive tower and platform there. So, the question in front of you is really, is this worth it in terms of livability for the community and in terms of getting a smaller number of units than the city could get from this lot and from a price which does not seem to be that high? In fact, it seems to be quite low. And this, without even mentioning separate entrances or even separate playgrounds, one at deck level. As someone living in the neighborhood, my answer is unanimously no, and I hope you will vote to reject the recommendation. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you so much for your, your presentation and your, your discussion this evening. You do have a question from councillor Hardwick, and go ahead, councillor Hardwick.
Thank you very much. Listening to your analysis, it strikes me that you've, you've done the math, you've run the numbers. What's your background? What, what do you bring to this analysis, if you don't mind me asking?
I am an economist. I'm not a planner. I'm not an architect. And so, I've been looking at these numbers and trying to develop my own knowledge of this. I've been trying to reach out to the architect to help me with this. It was not easy to get someone to help me with this. And, and the report is getting the numbers. In fact, I was kind of, that was confirming what my own calculations I made on my own by seeing in some of the appendix of the, what is the square footage that is allowed for this particular lot or under the current zoning, and could see something like a hundred eighty-four, under this, whatever the square footage that is indicated there. And so, that confirmed the kind of calculation that I did on my own. But I'm not an architect, I'm not a planner, I'm just a con.
But you asked the core question, is it worth it? So-
Exactly.
So, you're, what you're doing is balancing out the numbers on this against the livability and cost to the community. How do you balance that out? I mean, that's a real challenging issue for us here. And I'm sure they've run, run the numbers in the pro formas, and that, everybody's looking at the dollar signs here, but how do you balance that against the community and, and is it worth it, as you suggested?
A very difficult question. One, I responded for myself, because I live there, because I want to live there, because this is a fantastic area, and I don't want it to be, to become, not destroyed, but having this, this massive investment there, this massive tower there is completely out of character. As somewhat said, early on, the fact that Vancouver House is still not completely settled, we don't know what will happen there, there is, there is an opportunity there to, to learn and to, to see what is going on. And, and so, I, I would like to ask you to, to put a proposal on this, and to, not only to study more, but this is the only answer that I, I can, I can tell you at this moment. I recognize that, and people have been saying that, and I recognize myself that social housing is important. I would like to see social housing there. I wish I had a solution for you to finance this as a seventeen-story building, and I wish there were some easier financing to get this done. So, it is a matter, but this is not even clear for how long you would have to wait for having the hundred fifty-two units to be built. I mean, Vancouver House was approved in twenty thirteen, the rezoning was approved in twenty thirteen, and we are in twenty twenty, and you probably just got some units early, earlier this year. So, so is it going to be eight years? What can you do in eight years? Can you have a, a project with, with B C Housing, with somebody else? I wish I could help you. I'm ready to help you if you need my help.
Well, as an economist, I'd be very interested in, in, in learning more from your analysis, but I think we're gonna run out of time here. But very much appreciated, and it does bring out the core question for us, which is, is it worth it? So, thank you very much for your insights.
And the appendix of the answer has the details of the assumptions that I made to make those calculations. So, if you want to see what kind of assumptions I made to get to those conclusions, you have them in the documents that was submitted.
Thank you. I'll make sure that the clerk sends it around to us again. Thank you so much. There are no other questions for you today, sir, so appreciate you phoning in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, we are on to the next speaker, who is Speaker number twenty-two and the last listed speaker, Nida Jevtich.
Hello. My name is, can anyone hear me well?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, so, my name is Nada Jevtich, and I, I do live here, I live in a neighborhood, forty-five Beach Crescent. I'll start with a message, "City needs science, not developers." It is very alarming, and as a city, I hope you see it alarming as well, that there is no structural engineer in, in this discussion, in one-of-a-kind city that is due for the big one. And it's a learn for our safety, and I think our safety is the basic right. I, I had the pleasure to, to be part of the Trump lecture in January this year, on twenty-fifth of January. Trump invited Mr. John Clog as a PUP professor, and John Clog is PhD, has PhD in environmental earth sciences. He's an award-winning Canadian authority in planetary and environmental earth sciences. Also, he's an expert in science of the last two million years of earth geological history, and specializes in geological hazards like earthquakes, tsunami, landslide, flood. So, one of my first questions to Mr. Jo, John Joseph Clog, after his alarming and chilling presentation on called Magnitude Nine, The Stress of a Giant Earthquake on the South Coast, was, what do you think about city building huge towers in a very alarming close proximity to the bridge? His answer was, obviously, it's, it's not, not a planning, it's not called planning, it's for safety. It is very dangerous, it's pretty much going to cut the bridge as, for any escape or aid option, basically. There's no planning there, and definitely, with this, at that time, when I asked the question, Vancouver House was coming up, and that was a very red flag, in my opinion. And now, we have even closer buildings to, to, to the bridge. Okay, so, what happened, and here's a chilling fact that happened on March twenty-second, twenty twenty. In my city, in my city in Croatia, where I come from, Zagreb, after eighteen eighty, they got earthquake in twenty twenty, so hundreds of forty years, five point five degrees scale, fifteen-year-old killed, interbrain trauma from debris falling off the sky. So, I plead a city, let's not add to casualties. Let's not, I don't, let's keep, think about your family, think about your children, think about your loved ones who might be here in this neighborhood, under that tower, six oh one, and be hit by the breeze and be a casualty. I, I really plead to, to think about life. Less is more. I, I, I know, like, you probably won't get as many property taxes, but there's other ways to get taxes. And I'm, I'm okay for bigger taxes, but I'm, I'm more okay for children and for safety and, and for, you know, for common sense. And this building is not common sense. It is already overly dense area. City of Vancouver preparedness sessions do not plan for this. There's no emergency response resources or safety net. There's no place to hide. There's absolutely no place to hide. And again, there's no structural engineer here to even like, you know, say something about it, like, this is absolutely hazard. Going to the more closer event, we affected with COVID nineteen, the, we need space for fifty so many houses.
And just fifteen seconds.
Okay, you don't need space, you don't need more density. And the most importantly, like childcare, childcare is, there's, there's, there's really no childcare and, and schools available.
And we're at the, and we're at the five-minute mark, so just wanted to thank you so much for your, your contribution this evening. We don't have any questions from you, so I'm gonna move on to the next speaker. Thank you so much again for, for calling in this evening. Okay, council, that's it for speakers, so I'm gonna have my first call for additional speakers. If there are any other speakers who want to speak to this item, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, participant code three five seven six six, hashtag to get on the list. And just a reminder that I'll ask you for your full name and if you're a resident of Vancouver. So, clerks, I'm gonna check with you. Is there anybody in the chambers first?
Mayor Stewart, this is the clerk, and no one in the chamber, and I understand no one on the line.
Okay, so no one on the line. I am going to call a second time then. Please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by participant code three five seven six six, hashtag to get on the list before the close of the speaker's list. And clerks, just a reminder that I think there were a number of items that councillors would have liked to seen emailed to them. I know you've emailed them a bunch of times, so just, maybe you've done that already, I just wanted to make sure that councillors have provided all the information. And I am gonna call for a five-minute break, just to give folks enough time to call in, then I will call, come back and call for a third time to close the speakers list or to hear from speakers. So, council, it is nine thirty. I suggest we come back at nine thirty-five, and I'll see if there's any more speakers. Okay, see you in five minutes. Okay, see you in five minutes.
Uh, yes, Mayor Stewart, this is the clerk here, and we do have, it looks like we have one person on the line.
Great. Uh, if I get the moderator to allow them in, that would be great. Yes, the caller is John Cassidy, you can go ahead, your line is open.
Yeah, hello, I'm calling about the, uh, rezoning for six oh one Beach Crescent.
Thanks very much, go ahead, you have up to five minutes to speak.
Great, um, yeah, I'm, I'm opposed to it, I think that, uh, it's just too big, I think the rezoning, uh, uh, doesn't compensate for what the city is, uh, getting for it, plus the, uh, CAC money doesn't seem to be, uh, appropriate for the, uh, scale of the project that, uh, is being, uh, proposed. Um, I think there's a better opportunity to make a better deal on this, and I think that, uh, council should, uh, revisit, uh, and send it back to planning, and, um, a separate door issue, we've, we've revised that, we've seen that before in, uh, the West End, so I think there's an opportunity to make this a better deal for the city. That's it.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Uh, Counselor Swanson, I see you on the list, do you have a question for the speaker? You're on mute still. You're muted, Counselor Swanson. Still muted. There you go.
Sorry.
That's okay.
So, is this questions to staff?
No, it's, uh, to the speaker.
Okay, sorry, I'm.
Okay, that's okay, that's okay. Uh, thank you, Speaker, that's it for this evening, and, uh, appreciate you calling in. Um, clerks, anybody else on the line?
Mayor Stewart, the clerk here, I'm seeing there are no more callers, and I would add that there is no one in the chamber.
Great, thanks so much. Um, so I'm gonna flip here to, okay, so, uh, seeing there are no speakers, the speakers' list is now closed, uh, and as there are a few public comments received after five PM today, we're gonna close the receipt of public comments and move on to the rest of the proceedings. Um, uh, so, let's see, counsel, we do have twenty-five minutes left here, so does the applicant have any closing comments?
Uh, no, but I do want to get back to one of the councillors' question regarding the, the size of the one bedrooms.
That's fine, go ahead.
It's, uh, what, uh, the studio size is three fifty square feet, one bedroom is five seventy, one bedroom accessible is six hundred, and then seven seventy for two-bedroom, nine sixty for three-bedroom.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Um, staff, do you have any closing comments?
No comments, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Uh, now, counsel, you can ask questions to staff, and I see Counselor Swanson on the list. Um, there you go, Counselor Swanson, up to five minutes.
Are the, uh, bedrooms in the social housing the same size as bedrooms in the condos?
I guess this is the staff?
Yeah.
Can you help with that one, anybody there, staff team?
Uh, thank you for the question, Counselor Swanson. Uh, we have Thor, uh, from the housing team on the line.
Hi, Councilor Andrea Gilman, again, uh, it looks like Thor has, has dropped off at this point. Um, I don't have the market unit sizes handy at this point, but, uh, as far as the social housing unit sizes, they are in line with our, um, Housing Design and Technical Guideline average sizes, as has been pointed out.
Okay, so I'm, I did send an email to Sadhu asking if it was possible to make an amendment, to make the approval of the project subject to working out the school issue. It seems to me, I mean, I would be able to swallow my distaste of luxury condos and pretentiousness for, for the social housing.
Counselor Swanson, uh, this is the, um, this is the questions-to-staff segment, uh, we do have to move in second this before we get into debate. Did you have any other questions for staff?
Yes, this is leading up to a question.
Okay, thanks.
Um, and I'm hoping that if we get social housing in there, we can not charge the nonprofit an arm and a leg, so it could actually be low-income social housing, but I was really taken by a couple of the speakers, including the principal, who talked about how a parent would have to, you know, take two buses to get their kids to school, and then two buses to retrieve their kids from school, which would actually, for the parent, be four trips, four buses each way. So, I'm thinking that the school is really important, and could we, could I make an amendment to approve this project subject to resolving the issue of having an adequate, uh, adequate schooling for the residents of the building?
Um...
I did ask that of the manager, but I don't know if he, maybe he's not there.
I'll, uh, I'll let staff contemplate that for a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, uh, sit here.
Yeah, Sadhu here, yeah, thanks. I did see your email, and I forwarded it to our planning staff into law. I, I don't, um, I'm, I'm waiting to hear back from them, councillor, but I, I don't see that that would be a viable condition on a rezoning, uh, project, but, um, if you would like, we can, uh, confer and get back to you.
Okay, thank you. That's good for me.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Carr?
Yes, thank you. Um, uh, the first, um, question I have is regarding the height, um, at this site, which a lot of speakers have raised, and I noticed that the referral report, page four, um, notes that, uh, the relevant, uh, council policies for this site include the higher buildings policy, amended in twenty-eleven to include the subject site. And so, um, I, I looked at the original policy, and it does indeed include the subject site, and there's a very specific memo, actually, that details and maps the, the heights and the sites, uh, with heights, and so for this site, it's very clear in the map, in the policy, that it states four hundred and twenty-five feet. Um, I've got, like, all the other background on that, but anyway, the point is, it says four hundred and twenty-five feet, and I also then note that in the referral report, um, this referral report, um, that Appendix D, um, summarizes the urban design panel and notes that the rezoning planner asked for advice from the panel on whether, quote, "the proposed height of five hundred and thirty-five feet is supportable as per the higher building policies and criteria." Please explain to me where there are criteria and elements of the higher building policy that even, that, that, that allow anything above four hundred and twenty-five feet.
Hi, this is Miguel Castillo, again, Urban Design. Um, I guess the consideration for the four to five feet for the policies, basically to mark the entry into the downtown, um, from, uh, Granville Bridge, um, just the, the four to five, it's just for that, and to establish, uh, a significant recognizable and new benchmark for the architectural activity at this location.
But it says up to four twenty-five.
It does say up, uh, to four, to five, I'm not sure how, uh, Vancouver House got the four to, four nine, uh, seven, um, but basically, on this proposal, it's trying to work with the, um, height of the Vancouver House.
So, I mean, normally, we're asked as councillors to, um, consider the policies that are in place, and whether or not, um, the proposal actually adheres to those policies. It's not the only criteria, of course, and I understand that, but, um, but there's such a specific, like, up to four twenty-five feet in that policy, I totally understand about Vancouver House, and that's already an exception, because it was four to five feet for Vancouver House as well in that policy. Um, so, um, so, but I just, I mean, how do you, how as a councillor, do I say, it's okay to not follow policy? The policy is, states something clearly, but it's okay to not follow it?
Uh, hello, Jason Olneck, Development Planning. Uh, the policy references an approximate dimension of four hundred and twenty-five feet. Uh, previous to this council, the approximately four, five hundred feet was approved for the Vancouver House. Uh, in that context, this project was evaluated, um, and from that, we derived the height of five hundred and thirty-five feet, uh, as part of the response and gateway, uh, uh, urban design, uh, for the sites. So, it, it is a, it is an approximate dimension.
Okay, I, I, I might have to ask the question again another time, because approximate is not what it says in that, in that, um, in that policy at all, it's, it's just very clear up to. Um, I have a second question, and that is around the separate doors, several speakers have raised that issue. Um, so why are separate entrance doors for social housing and standard strata units supportable? Um, and, uh, you know, I, in that context of that question, I do remember in a previous, uh, West End, um, rezoning hearing, that, um, the, uh, social housing provider spoke to a, a council, I was on council at that time, that they actually wanted a separate door, because they didn't want to pay the extra cost for a concierge, fancy entrance, potential risk of paying high repair costs if there was damage, so is that a common feeling amongst, um, social housing providers? Just give me the rationale for why two doors?
It's Andrea Gilman in ACCS Affordable Housing, I can jump in on that, just to say that, um, right now, so we have heard that from a number of operators, we know that, um, you know, the shared spaces have traditionally included the parking entry, the, um, the loading, the garbage, the recycling, but not necessarily the, um, the lobby, and that's, you know, for many of the reasons that you've talked about, the social housing operators are typically looking for finishings that are going to, um, have longevity to them, that are going to be replaceable at an affordable rate and not kind of drive up building costs, but what I can let you know is that, um, we have, uh, Commission City Spaces Consulting to do some work for us, to, uh, look at, uh, what's happening in other jurisdictions, and also to consult with, um, the nonprofits on our, uh, shortlist, as well as strata managers and others to talk about these exact questions. And with COVID, this work has been delayed, but we are expecting that study to, um, to complete, uh, probably next month, and then we will come back to council and report out on what we have heard.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Counselor Dominado, up to five minutes.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, so I'm, I gotta pick up where Counselor Carr left off, because similarly, I was hearing, uh, concerns around, from members of the public, about alignment with policy, and so I, I have the higher buildings policy up in front of me, and I'm looking at, uh, the, uh, permitted heights, um, in the central business district area, then the secondary heights considered around the Granville Bridge gateway, and it, I read it as approximately four hundred and twenty-five feet. Maybe staff could take a different stab at this for me, to understand, is that, coming from a policy background, is that, um, we have bylaws in the city, and bylaws are, um, flow from the charter and ha- carry the weight of law, and so there seems to, there's a bit of a rigidness to bylaws, as there is provincially around certain ministerial orders and, um, regulatory frameworks. Policies often have flexibility built into them, and, um, exceptions are permitted at that, but I am getting, I'm looking for a little bit of a clear explanation with respect to Counselor Carr's question, because I, I'm, 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 I'm taking my provincial perspective, which is not necessarily the same as at the civic level with the framework we have for regulations and policies. I'm wondering if somebody else could take a stab at outlining and addressing the question of how is it, um, a greater height is permitted? Is it because the policy is, in and of itself, it is flexible, and there are exceptions permitted, um, it's not rigid, like a bylaw?
Hi, Jason, I'll look again. Yes, um, the, the, the policy and the guidelines do say four hundred and twenty-five seat feet, uh, but it is an approximation. In addition, the approval for the Vancouver House, uh, did use the term general, general for that height, so from that context, five hundred feet was approved as an approximation. The urban design for this was to juxtapose, uh, the two, uh, so the five hundred feet, uh, is actually maintained, uh, at the rooftop level, uh, so that they align. However, when we looked at the rooftop occurrences, the elevator overruns, uh, the, the window-washing equipment, and everything else that goes into the top of a building, uh, we were able to work with the applicant to create an architectural, uh, uh, response to that with the sloped encanted form, which, uh, actually would be still a five-hundred-foot building, it's just more architecturally considered than the adjacent building. Uh, hang on, yes, yeah, so, uh, again, uh, the, uh, original report for the Vancouver House did, uh, say exactly, allow consideration for two landmark buildings of generally four hundred and twenty-five feet, so that's the interpretation that we're using.
Okay, thank you, that, that helps, um, super. Um, my, my other question relates to, um, uh, sort of utilities, uh, infrastructure related to new builds such as this, um, and there was a, um, a yellow memo circulated quite late, talking about a, a, a new policy framework, and I think it was latecomer fees, I'm just wondering if staff could speak to that, because I, I'm not sure I fully understand if that's tied to capital infrastructure, and, um, like, I'm thinking about sewers and things like that, pressure on our infrastructure related to new builds, particularly significant builds like this?
Thanks for the question, councillor. My name is Vagavgror, I work for the engineering department, um, so I can give you a brief explanation of what the latecomer scheme is, it was enacted by the province, had the legislation in March, and this is fairly new to the city. So, what it does apply to is mostly development-related utility infrastructure, it doesn't relate to capital infrastructure, so... to capital infrastructure. So in case of this six-to-one beach, what we have used is a 24-hour latecomer agreement scheme, which, uh, which basically means that, um, the applicant has 24 hours after building the infrastructure to, for, to look for reimbursement from any other future beneficiary from that infrastructure upgrade, which is just a way for us to, for, for us to keep the condition as it is in the, in, as it is in the zoning conditions.
Okay. So it, it allows us to recoup costs. Is that correct?
Yeah. This is, uh, this is Teresa O'Donnell. Let me, let me also try to give you an explanation for that.
Just 20 seconds.
Very new. Um, this is actually very similar to when we would, would condition, uh, a nominal CAC fee for like, say a daycare, like a $10. Uh, it, it gives the applicant the ability to say no, they don't want to be a party to the latecomer fee. They've agreed to that. And, and we work out the, um, the conditions of the infrastructure costs through, through separate agreements.
Thanks. That's the five minutes. Uh, so councillor, we're at, uh, nine minutes to 10. We're scheduled to stop at 10:00. So we either need a motion to recess, uh, and we would continue this debate in two weeks from now on, uh, um, September 30th, I believe. Let's look in here. Uh, September 30th at 3:00 PM, or we could have a vote to extend, um, and complete this item tonight. So I'll just leave it to whoever wants to move a motion.
Motion to recess and continue debate, uh, and decision, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, it's September 30th at 3:00 PM?
Yeah.
Do you have a seconder for that?
Second, Hardwick.
Okay. And I'm just gonna call yays and nays, uh, all in favor of a, of a recess. Uh, we'll continue until 10 o'clock, but at 10 o'clock, we would recess. Uh, all in favor of that, say yea.
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 Or say nay? Okay. If you notice, thanks councillor. That would be, uh, so, uh, councillor Boyle, it'll probably be our last question of the evening. Uh, go ahead, up to five minutes.
Thanks. Um, I'm hoping, uh, to hear from staff, uh, what they think might happen if, if this rezoning doesn't pass. And I ask because a number of the simpler projects that come to rezoning are, for example, zoned for four stories of condo and we're, um, debating, uh, rezoning for six stories of rental. In this situation, it's my understanding that the current zoning isn't really financially viable to be built and that's part of why it's that empty. So, uh, is that, I guess, is that an accurate analysis in what you imagine would be the result if this doesn't go through? What happens on this? What happens next?
Thank you councillor. This is Teresa O'Donnell and I'll, uh, let Jerry speak to his part. However, in terms of just the zoning request, if the council, uh, decides not to support the zoning request and denies the request tonight, the applicant would be, um, unable to bring another request for, forward to the city council for a period of at least one year.
Okay. Got another, uh, other staff person?
Uh, Jerry Evans, Director of Real Estate. Um, to the question of whether, I think the question was whether, whether it would get redeveloped under its existing zoning, um, would be unlikely.
Okay. So, so, um, if this proposal doesn't go through, what's most likely is that the land continues to sit for a while and, and some other kind of proposal comes back to us more than a year down the road?
Yes, I think that would be a likely scenario.
Uh, okay. Um, that is all of my questions for the evening.
Okay, thanks. Um, we do have six minutes left. So councillor Kirby Young, if you wanna give it a shot, please go ahead.
Um, okay, thank you. Um, I, I want to go back to a question that councillor Boyle, um, touched on earlier, and I just want to get some clarity in, in my head around that. And it was related to the, um, original zoning specifying 150-plus social housing units. And I, I just want to clarify this in, in simpler terms. It, would you characterize that, that that was an aspiration but not a deliverable? And the only required deliverable is 20% of units based on the policy? I'm trying to ask this question in different ways to get some clarity.
Jerry Evans, again. Um, this might be a planning question, but I'll, I'll give it a go. The, under the existing zoning, the zoning allows for, um, things around about 129,000 square feet of social housing and, and around 59,000 square feet of market housing on that site under the current zoning. Without funding from an external source for the social housing, that project would not be viable under the existing zoning.
Can, can you repeat the numbers? 129,000 square feet for social and what was the other metric?
It's approximately, I think it's in the report, but it's approximately, it's a, a total of 186,000 square feet, uh, buildable square feet is allowed on that site. Um, the breakdown is, is approximately 59,000 square feet of market density and the remainder is social housing, 152 units.
Okay. Maybe we can pick this up when we reconvene then, because I feel like I need, I'm gonna need a bit more time on, on this because I'm, I'm not clear on the answer. I don't think it fully addresses my question. So I'm gonna defer my question till we reconvene.
Okay. Um, we, we just really have a few minutes left, councillor. So why don't we just, uh, break early and, um, save ourselves two minutes? Uh, but I just wanna, I just wanna-
To recess?
Almost there. We, we actually have passed the motion already, uh, councillor Hardwick. So I think we're, we're good. Um, we just edit 10. Just want to remind councillors that, uh, it's important not to engage in any discussion or have any correspondence between now and moving to debate and decision. I imagine when we come back in two weeks, we'll have a, you know, a round of questions and then, uh, make our decision. But you shouldn't speak to anybody in between, uh, over the next, uh, 14 days. So with that, councillor, I think we're, we're good to recess. So thanks very much for your, um, time this evening and we'll talk to you soon, I'm sure. Thanks, clerks. Anything else?
Mayor Stewart, clerk here. No, everything is good. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much, everybody. Have a good weekend.
Good night, Paul. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Good night, everybody.
Night.
Night.